We have road comp. District one. District two.
Here.
District three.
Robert.
District four.
Here.
And district five is present. Okay, under number one, under public form, is considered the claim of Michelle Mizell for windshield damage in the amount of $251 and 23 cents. And we would need the road manager back in here. Tim? Hello, how are you doing? Would you like to approach? Just come right over here. Give us your name and your address. You can unmask.
I'm Michelle Mizell. I'm at 17480 Landeburg.
Thank you. Okay, and would you like to talk, start telling us exactly?
Yes, I'm April 20th. I went out to my vehicle around Big Fish, and nothing was wrong. Got something out of the side door, never touched the back. I went in, I come back out, I think it was somewhere around my throat or something like that, I don't remember as that comes. But my back was just broke. In between that time, I had my windows open and I saw the mower nearby, and he had his laid down on my concrete, on my driveway, and there was a bunch of rocks there. Well, I didn't hear anything crash because I had TV going, I could hear his mower going and everything, so rolls out like it was about 1:30 when I went out and saw it because we were getting ready to go. I didn't do it. I know a car that got done, you know, and the way that it busted, it busted from the inside out. A rock hit it and it fell out. So I called the county, and then I went and called the county department office, and then shortly after, I had the supervisor come out and check it. And he himself said it looked like a rock hit it, and so that's basically what happened. We had to go get it fixed that Friday, that Friday, because I happen to have my family, so then I can't live with it.
I had kids, I had a man.
Yeah, a baby, a three-year-old, and I have two kids, so you know, not really getting out to the rock, but trying to get out and go when I'm trucking over. It wasn't, but so.
Do we have our safety officer that did the report?
Nicole.
Nicole. And you reported that the day it happened, it sounds like not even the first day.
She reported the day it happened, and it was the next day that I went out there, because it was later in the afternoon by the time they got it to me, about 4 o'clock. And when I went out there, she still had her vehicle glass, everything was still there, two pictures, but the road manager, or I'm sorry, the supervisor over at that barn went over and talked to her that afternoon that it had happened. And that's what I included on the report, the scene of the pictures, that she had talked to someone prior to, so just went and took additional pictures.
Supervisor?
Oh, Raymond over, oh, over the barn, sorry.
What did the driver of the tractor say?
Driver of the tractor, I didn't speak directly to him.
You didn't speak to him?
I did.
Well, I guess Raymond.
Since he had already spoke to her. Since he had already spoken.
What did he say?
He didn't remember the incident happening, I'm pretty correct.
Tim, are you aware of it? Do you know anything that happened?
I don't know anything as far as what happened with it. I was made aware of it Friday, when I finally got the report. As far as any of the justice, I haven't seen it coming.
So the driver was not aware of it?
No.
Were they out cutting grass then, Tim?
Yes.
Yeah. It was the Monday of February 28th.
I asked Tim a question, because I think legally, Tim has always told us that county, unless there's some negligence on our part, whether that could be defined as negligence or not, but another question I might ask, you know, when a person is on the road, there's some responsibility, you assume some road hazards or stuff like that. However, when you have a car parked in a yard or on the driveway, how does that differ, differentiate from the going down the road and travel? That's, you follow what I'm saying?
I had it happen on Friday. I got run over, ran over something on the Bay Bridge, and clearly didn't make it off of it.
Yeah.
My wife was very upset.
That's part of it, because the car was parked, they're not.
Yeah, that's a little bit different because you're not inspecting the road hazard there at the very least.
Right, right.
Problem is, just you don't know. I mean, you don't, if the standard of legal is what's more likely than not, what the standard of evidence is more likely, what you have is a basic assumption, which may be a valid assumption, but a car or truck can throw a rock, your windshield can actually just do this. I've had one just sitting outside and come in the driveway the next day and find it, usually because of heat or something. That's probably not the case here because it hasn't been that hot. This board has to adjudicate that the county was negligent in some manner and caused the damage in order to pay it. That's the standard.
And it's hard to determine that, because as I asked, why wasn't the driver of the tractor questioned and asked about things? How can we determine that if the tractor driver himself was not questioned? Or we don't have information or a report from the driver himself?
The only thing that supports the claim is that she actually physically observed, as I understand your testimony, the tractor go over the driveway and not lift its blade, throw rocks in the driveway, or.
And I could hear the.
And you could hear him slinging. So at least you have some direct evidence by witness that heard the clatter of the rocks, and he did not lift his blade, which he should when he gets out of the grass. A blade should be lifted, and that, in my opinion, that would be negligence without even talking to the driver, because she observed that, the driver, she observed that. But the problem is, there's a gap in time, and I have to, or can adjudicate that that did break the windshield before it fills up to power.
I'm of the opinion, I'm of the opinion that when a car's parked in a driveway, that's a little different than when I get out on the road, there's a natural assumption that there are road hazards out there. Exactly, but when I got my car parked in a driveway.
I don't expect you to break a window. I wouldn't have wished you to break the window and just sit there.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. And Tim, you're stating that if in fact, that's why I'd like the driver to have said, yeah, I, and then I gravel and all that, that would kind of be.
But you do have a difference here. We've had this before, where they've just come out and their windshield's broken, lawnmower's not even there, but then they find out the lawnmower, but we don't have any connection between the two, and yet the board has denied this point. The difference here is, this lady actually observed the lawnmower go across the driveway and did not lift the blade. She heard the clanging of the rocks. The only thing that concerns me, and this board has a right to adjudicate that, is the gap in time, whether or not it actually hit the wind. It's a logical assumption that it did, but it's still an assumption. But this board has a right to adjudicate that, as enough evidence has been used.
Okay, do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to pay the 250.
A motion to pay the claim?
The claim has been paid, it tells me you don't have any insurance or anything.
Or to Ramburghs.
Where do you have, Georgia's taxes on there?
We're on the page 296, because the cheaper one would take two weeks to get here. I had to.
So what, how much are you paying? Minus the taxes?
It says 223.
That's, that's the lowest quote minus taxes.
I pay it minus taxes.
The one we paid was 277.
So I'll second.
To pay the 25123, or to pay the 277?
25123.
And we will be paying 251, that's your lowest quote, that we.
That's.
25123.
And I'll just say that the county's.
Yeah, that's what's.
So we're having a motion.
Thank you so much.
We have, wait, wait, wait. We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Further discussion. On those in favor, you signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. And you have a last day. On the driveway. Okay, now we'll switch, and get some more people in here for the number two.
Warren Payton.
Warren Payton. Thank you.
Warren Payton.
How to say six feet away, you said, and then through.
Thank you.
Six feet, you said, six feet right there. And landshapers, they also want to.
How many people we have?
They can have to have them in at a time. Can they watch until?
I don't know, I just saw one out there, so I know.
So let's see, you was out here, and then.
Okay.
You want me to step out?
Tim can step out.
Tim's got to be staying here.
He was, he was volunteering, so.
Just a recommendation, it's important to write your receipt if you want to. It's a recommendation.
Okay. And then, and landshaper, if he wants to come in.
Landshaper. Landshaper. Landshaper.
Okay. They're not, they're just. You have to sit six feet apart. There we go. Thank you. Okay, great guys, Steve Warren, Warren Payton, discussing reverse auction bids for the 2020, 2021 annual town bids, Route 10-7A asphalt plant pickup in place, in place asphalt bid, accepted April 23rd, 2020.
Thank you all for being here tonight, it's happening.
You just, you come up to the, tell Steve all about your addresses. About your homes, where you work.
Stephen Warren, Warren Payton, 11211.
Thank you. And Richard Lai.
Yeah, this is Rodney Lang, Robinson, he's our county house counsel, and he's gone and presented video today, a slideshow of the reverse auction bid for last Thursday, was it Thursday?
The 24th.
24th last week.
23rd.
23rd.
We just want to show some discrepancies in the video versus the outcome of the bid, and.
So, yeah, we're just going to show videos of two items bid. The story's going to be the same for both of them. You know, you'll see our view of the vendor bidding and the reverse auction software. You'll see us submit our bid, it'll accept it, show it, show it as the low bid on the screen, the time will run down in one second, and the screen will go blank. There'll be some time passing once in the video, just the person, the screen go to blank, it goes to a screen showing the bid submission for bids, not the bid results. There's a, you know, and one is about 20 minutes break between the close of the reverse auction and the reveal of the public bid. The other one was probably like three or five minutes, just based on the old bids and when they got to that screen. So you'll move through, the first one we're talking about is the fresh, fresh limeson delivered bid. We'll let you see the video. We'll go ahead and start it. You'll see up in the, up in that corner right there is the time left in the auction. Over here is a little difficult to see, but that is the current low bid, and then the graph just shows the bid history. You can see that Warren Payton's put in several bids. Bidder number two, who I believe is landshaper, probably you know that as a vendor, you don't know your competition, but those are the bids submitted. So this is the last 17 seconds of the, of the video. You'll see us submit a bid about 3350 with about five seconds left. You'll see it count down to one second. It'll show one second for about one second, and then go blank. So that's the blank screen we talked about. That's the notice of invitation to bid information. Again, doesn't go straight to the bid results, just goes back to the, just goes to the.
Next item.
Next item and start bidding. So just to show you, you know, I said that that screen showed one second for about one second, and you know, the way we calculated that was, we went through, took screen caps on the video. This is just a screen cap from that video. The only thing new is down this right hand corner, you can see how many seconds have elapsed in the video, and that's down to the hundreds of a second, to move to the next one. So this is with two seconds left. This is 15 and 4 hundredths of a second into the video. It's still showing two seconds up here. If you step through one more hundredth of a second on the video, it flips over to one second. So that's 15 seconds, 15 and 5 hundredths of a second in this video, it flips over to one, and it's going to stay up there for about 99 hundredths of a second according to this video. So flip over to the next one, you'll see 16 and 4 hundredths of a second. So 15.5 to 16.4, 99 hundredths of a second, almost, almost a full second. Step forward one more hundredth of a second, the blank screen, and it's all stayed blank for about two seconds, and then it goes to the notice of invitation for bid. Stuff I wanted to clear. So again, we bid two more items after this, without seeing the results. About 20 minutes later, if we'll step through, they pull up this screen, you know, the last video shows you in one second, shows 3350 as the winning bid. If you look down here, there's a new bid that was not visible during the public portion of reverse auction. It's now $33 instead of 3350. We asked them to, you know, provide us the record of the bid submissions. We'll go to the next screen. This is what that software produces, it just populates an Excel file. It shows a bid being submitted with one second left, you know, but as we saw, we saw 99 hundredths of that second with no update. There's no, no more precision to that than just one second left. There's no, no hundredth of a second or cents of a second, just one second left. Move on to the next bid, it'll be a pretty similar story, hot asphalt in place. We'll show you a video, we've got like the last 15 seconds of the auction. You'll see us submit a bid, I'm going to play it. You'll, you'll see us submit a bid again around five seconds, about 73 dollars. It'll count down to one second. You'll see one second on the screen for almost a full second, it'll still show 73 as the winning bid, then it will go to blank. So same process as far as determining how long that one second was up there. Took some screen caps. This is from a longer video, that video, 15-second video was the last 15 seconds of the video we used these screen caps from. But 30, 30, approximately 30, 7 seconds in, if you move to the next screen. A little hard to see with this resolution, but that still shows 10, two seconds left. This is 37 and 32, 100ths of a second into that video. Move forward 100ths of a second, it has flipped over to one. This time that's going to show one for 92 hundredths of a second. Still shows us as the low bid at 73. You can see that's already looks a little faded, that's because it's already starting to fade to the blank screen. One more hundredth of a second, it's blank. Same story, this time there's only, you know, three, five minutes after the bid, the reverse auction closed, before they show this screen. And again, you see that 73 is the last one showing, and now there's a new, new $70 bid that was not visible to the participants. Next screen, same thing with, with the bid history, it just collects it to the nearest whole second. Doesn't tell you, you know, when in that second, you don't know if that's, you know, 1, 9 seconds left in the auction, or 0.01 seconds left in the auction, or whether the, whether the bid software even tracks that, tracks that detail. That's all the information we can get up and move over.
And that's the question, can you back up to that screen for the first bid, so we can compare the times on both of them? That screen and then the one on the print, just is what you showed.
So, you have to see the frustration we have with that process. You know, we think, you know, obviously what we'd like is for our last visible bid to accept as a low bid. To the extent that's not available, you know, we think that this should be redone. I would think this is kind of effective for two reasons. You know, one, having that bid populate after the public, publicly available portion of the auction, and then try and validate it with just an Excel sheet prepared by the software, only down to one second. You know, that's not really the type of precision that would give you confidence, you know, in your ability to validate that bid was timely, when it was not visible to the public. You know, two, probably the bigger deal is, you know, having that gap between the close of the reverse auction and making the auction results publicly available. You know, once that gap is long enough to provide a, you know, last look and re-submission, which, you know, for these unit bids, you're talking about, you know, that takes 15 seconds, 10 seconds, not 10 minutes. You know, we think that's a defect in the process, it's hard to overcome. You know, we don't allow people to, we don't allow other issues to open bids in private, we don't allow third parties to open bids and certify the public that everything was above board and in compliance. You know, we do things, we open stuff openly, transparent with the public, having opportunities to view it, so that everybody can have confidence that, you know, that tax payer college is being used wisely and in a good manner.
Does the legislature force this?
It does. And you see, I've been, I've been on the other side of this. I've managed reverse auction, and I did not like the process either.
Not at all.
It, it was frustrating, we had, we had to redo our, we had to redo a reverse auction, or not similar issue, but it was the same issue, just there's a learning curve with, learning curve through the reverse auction process, and I think it's not fun. You know, I recognize this is, this is one of the vendors selected by the idea they had entered into a statewide contract. You know, we looked at this, you know, they talked to us, they told us they were the hallmark of, of reverse auction. I don't know if y'all got that pitch, but that's the pitch we got. And they were cheaper than everybody else. And I think that, you know, there's some quirks to their software that makes it difficult in these type of situations to allow on it to put the public back on.
Your contention is the screen went blank, you had no opportunity to bid before it was supposed to, in reference to the time that you had between the bids. But I'm saying, I presume there's, there's a time on that, I've never participated in that, so I presume when bids are being submitted, that at some point in that electronic bidding process, that there's an end time.
That's correct. Depending on how you set it up, yes.
You know, like you said, that there's an end time, so your contention is that the screen went blank, and you didn't have an opportunity to submit another bid.
We were saying, when it went blank, we were the winning bid. You're saying it goes blank at zero, and we were the winning bid.
So you were the winning bid at the time, and it went blank?
That's right.
That's what I'm.
Then it comes back a few minutes later, and you didn't win it.
Yeah. So you didn't have an opportunity to see the bid that won it.
That's right. Correct. I always, I mean, we saw those hours.
You, I mean, you assumed that when the, I presume you assumed that when the, when the screen went blank, that was the ending of the process. Is there a warning, like seconds now, each time you have a warning?
There is a feature now, maybe Jody can, a plan called anti-sniping, anytime, I think that's what it's called, right? Anytime somebody bids, it extends it for 10 more seconds or something. That was not applicable to this bid for some reason. I don't know why, maybe Jody can explain that. But generally what would happen, or should happen, if landshaker made his last bid, that should have extended it by 10 seconds. So they would have an opportunity to bid again.
Five minutes.
That's right.
Go ahead and explain it.
Yep. On the anti-sniping.
That was not on this. That was not on this bid.
Correct. And, and the reason it was not on this is, when you're bidding multiple items, you have to have a end time and then a beginning time for each bid. And this particular day, we were bidding a total of eight items. So we had 10 minutes per each item, and it ended, and then the next one began, because that was a starting time. So you had a ending time and a starting time for each of the eight items.
So, so in other words, in this particular case, that last bid did not generate another 10 seconds. Is that what you're saying?
So that's correct, because anti-sniping was not engaged, correct.
Why was that not engaged?
Because you have to have an ending point and a starting point when you're doing multiple bids. So we're doing eight items.
Why don't you just do them on different days? Why don't you just do them on different days? Do this bid for this one day, and that bid for that next. I'm asking for a reason, but I'm.
Okay, so we've had some complaints about that with the multiple items, and how long the vendor has to sit and, and commit X amount of time doing that. So this is the process, this is a process that we followed. When I came on board, I continued that process. And then with the eight items, we could break that out, where it could be, say, one in the morning, one in the afternoon, or one a day. It could be.
You came on board, we didn't have this. So you didn't follow this, because just that, we didn't do this when you came, when you first came here.
We were doing EASI reverse auction, yes, ma'am.
Did y'all do sealed bids before, or you always bid this way?
Yeah, we did sealed bids before this was ever implemented.
You just started.
But Jody, you said, let me ask a question. Jody, you said there's a beginning time and an ending time established prior to bidding process.
Yes.
Well, what, what keeps somebody from waiting just split second or so to offer a bid, and then it's physically impossible for the competitor to offer a bid before the thing goes off?
And, and that's exactly right. That's the sniping part of a bid. And then in reference to the last second, I really need Robbie's input on this, because he did reach out to Central bidding, and they were talking about, about the time that your particular internet, not everybody's operates the same.
Yeah, your, your connection may be slow, it may have.
Robbie, stand please. We're going to have to do this one at a time, we're on, you know, so that everyone that is watching from television can understand, from the, basically can understand what we're saying, so.
I did, I did reach out to the company. I did ask, you know, how can we make sure that this is, this is fair, this is the way it needs to be? They gave me a couple of actual things that could interfere with this process, one being the internet connection speed of not just their stuff, but everyone's. You know, it has to go out to the web, it's got to go here, here. Who is it ever, internet speed may be slower, it could have caused a problem. That could have been one of the reasons for the, for the white background, I don't know what your, your speeds were that you were connecting with. One of the other things that they, that he expressed, we did talk, talk about the anti-sniping, that anti-sniping goes on for five minutes. I talked with Jody about that sometime in the past, they had, certain people have possibly bid low, and they just kept that anti-sniping going for a long period of time. How much were they bidding on that?
On that particular one that went bad? About a penny a bid?
A penny a bid. So you've also got that, that you got to look out for. There's certain things with this anti-sniping that, that are difficult to work with, but with this process, it'd probably be best to break it out, in my opinion, break it out and do it individually. Have it have something set to where it's 50 cents or 25 cents for the next bid, and not a penny. I think it can be done, and done effectively. Yes.
So my line is, I think what we're dealing with, they understand, their contention is that the screen went blank for whatever reasons. It doesn't matter that, that affected the bid, that made the bid some, some problem with the bidding. If the screen goes blank, you don't have an opportunity then to, to bid.
And just a little bit of a clarification, I mean, the, the screen going blank, I was just pointing that out to, to show what's available, what information is available to the public. The, the bigger contention was this, we just showed the second, we showed the lowest bid, and.
That's my point, the screen goes blank, you have the lowest bid, the next thing you know, you see a report on the screen somewhere, that you, there's a lower, there's another bid submitted after the screen went blank, and you were the lowest bid.
And, and one thing, you're talking about.
And you didn't have an opportunity, once the screen came back up and you noticed the lower bid, it was done. You didn't have an opportunity to just another, another bid if you wanted to. Because the process was defective.
Right, and just one thing, you know, he mentioned the potential issue with lag times based on internet speed. I actually came down to the bordering to view the, the public portion of the reverse auction. Their screen looks essentially identical to the one that we showed you, it just didn't have Warren Payton identified as a bidder, since it's all public. have warrant paving identified as a bidder since it's all public. It's just bidder zero, bidder one, bidder two. That was essentially the same experience I saw viewing, viewing from this building. And I grant that software is on the, I'm assuming on server with Central Bidder somewhere in Louisiana or wherever they contract with. But just to point out that that's not a warrant paving specific issue. That was basically the same thing we saw in the public portion of auction in y'all's quarter.
Yes, why did you come?
Oh, because it happened the same way la, the same way last year.
So you've had an experience with this before, so that's why you came.
Last year, I was, I was out of town and he called Joel Moody, who runs our office here, and he said, we wanted the county bid. He never had, so I was excited about it. And he called me back thirty minutes later and said, we didn't win. So this year we recorded and I sent him down here to be witness, so I wanted to have all my eyes, have my T's crossed because two years in a row, from what we understand, talking to IT people, he could buy sniping software that could give me the last second bid if I wanted to invest in it. And I think that kinda takes out the fairness of a public bid and it'll do the absolute right thing, so.
Ms. Martin?
Jody? Do we have the sniping software?
The anti-sniping.
Do we have it?
We do and.
Okay, that was the answer to that question. My next question is, you did not choose to use that during this bid process because you did multiple bids.
Yes, ma'am.
But is there anything preventing you from doing single bids at different times?
Okay, no ma'am, except for the vendor's time having to go back the next day, the next day, the next day. That would be.
Okay, then if we do it one day at a time?
Well, and Mr. Parker can speak for landshapers, but if two of the items are asphalt items, there's only two items that are asphalt, F O B asphalt in place asphalt. You know, you have the same item, I mean, I wouldn't have a problem sitting on there for a couple of hours. I think that the situation you said is to keep it from being a penny increment, it needs to be a minimum of twenty-five cents. Five minutes may be excessive, thirty seconds would be plenty, but to re, re.
You're bidding, you're bidding about the pennies for asphalt?
It, it, it was breaking down, it was breaking. At one point, we had to do a rebid and then we had one bidder that did not show up and two bidders that did, they were doing it about a penny a break and it was, it was, we had to wind up having to negotiate that one.
Mr. Holliday?
Can I ask a question? This is somewhat confusing to me too. The anti-sniping only lasts for five minutes.
So, so, yes. You can, you can do it for that five minutes.
Five minutes, so at the end of five minutes, that stops regardless?
No, no, if somebody sniped, if, if somebody drops price again before that five minutes, it continues another five minutes.
Your concern about having it all at one time is that might, maybe the bid might go on for an hour. But these are, obviously that's not gonna happen in this situation. We wish it would, you know, about ten dollars. But, you know, at some point in time, it's gonna run out because the price is gonna get at or below what you're paying for the stuff, so it's not gonna really make an inordinate time to deal with, just space them out, you know? Because at some point in time, the price is gonna run out, they're not gonna give it to us for less than what they pay for the stuff.
We can do them one a day, we can do them one in the morning, one in the afternoon.
One of these fixes itself, doesn't it? Because there's gonna come a point in time where.
If you do big enough increment, it will.
I have a question. Well, when we're talking about doing it separate day with time, am I understanding correctly on, on these electronic bids, for example, you had asphalt in place and then you had the other bid was asphalt at the plant?
Correct.
We, the county itself would pick up the asphalt at the plant at the different price. Was that going, those two going on at the same time? They were not going on at the same time, so what difference does it make if it's the next day or the next hour or so?
That's what I said, Sid, I was.
That's, that's, what difference does it make if, if, if at the time, let's say we're bidding asphalt in place, that's all you're bidding, each bidder is seeing that on the screen. So what difference does it make if once that one is completed, then we go to the asphalt at the plant?
Let's let Robbie answer that.
The only, the only process that you're gonna run into with the sniping is it may last for two hours, three hours. You can't set a time for the next bid.
The anti-snipe, Scott, what you call it? Sniping is to prevent somebody from taking the last process of a second to submit a bid and not give the other person an opportunity to submit.
And if nobody submits a bid before that five minute point, then it ends right there.
But it, it could potentially.
It, it could go on if somebody, if somebody ends up dropping price, yes.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's my question is, if it gets to that breaking point and if you have anti-sniping, then it could go on for another hour?
It, it could go on as long as somebody continues to enter price in the last five minutes.
But they can't bid.
What's wrong with that? It's thirty-three dollars.
That's good for the county.
Wait, wait, what is the time?
So my point is, after a while, even if it does go on for an hour, it's gonna reach to a point that you're not gonna throw a five cent bid up there and go, you're gonna lose money or you either for that one. So at some point, it's gonna stop itself, correct? You're gonna say, you know what, I'm outta here, I can't go that low, you're gonna say the same thing.
Especially if you eliminate the penny bid.
It will eliminate that and then this will fix itself. So my opinion is that anti-sniping.
That's right, advantage is always in the.
I swear I'd say.
It's our advantage.
And without due respect.
But it has to be fair and equitable to the numbers.
If you're a vendor of the county and you can't spend two hours watching a bid, then I don't know what to do.
If you had asphalt items. If you had asphalt items on today at ten o'clock, I mean, as long as we weren't sitting there watching number two pencils and paper and, you know, copy paper, I mean, all the asphalt items, I'm interested in. And I assume everybody else in my business would be, so we're okay with that. We spend days putting bids together anyways.
I have a question for the late. Can we, assuming if we throw these bids out, do we require a sealed bid or do we have to go back?
I think these have to be a list for, you gotta apply the reverse auction act for a wait room. But, you know, ultimately, keep in mind, the board, this board, this is a method of receiving bids. This board still has the ability to determine what is the lowest and best bid. You've got an item of eight items where, I don't know if this is something the road part have an issue with or not. Only two of the items are not obtained by the same bidder. So the county trucks might have to go to two different locations to get materials. Except for the ones in place, that's a little bit different. The board has a right to determine which is the lowest and best bid on all of them. You could give every single one of these to the landshapers and you chose them to be the lowest bid bid or every single one of the warrant paid and you chose them to be the lowest and best bid. You've got a list of eight items here.
We also have.
That's right, we got expertise from you. Their contention is that they, they did not have, after they submitted the bid, which at the time that they submitted it, from the lowest bid, that's their contention, then the screen went blank. They did not have an opportunity to respond apparently to the lowest bid because they never saw it until it was done.
Well, the rebid, is that all prices of business were.
That's what then just gone there, yeah.
So you're starting at thirty-three dollars on this bid.
Yeah, so I would say that the reverse auction is intended to, that's the purpose is for that price discovery for the vendors to compete off of that price discovery and try and outcompete each other.
In theory, it works better. In theory, it works better, but in practical application, when you're dealing with these computers and all that, it's just what happened.
I guess I'd like to say every limestone, I event asphalt item that bid that day, when the screen went off, showed us winning, two of the items came back, said we lost. So all the others that went off said we won and actually came back.
And you weren't asphalt.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I'm, I'm still just a little bit confused because the timestamp is nine forty-nine fifty-nine. What's the, what's the last number that's where the timestamp goes and who had that? What company had that? Because basically, ultimately, it depends on the timestamp itself.
What you're saying is the low bidder, it was the low bidder subsequent to the nine forty-nine fifty-nine? Was, was the, the bid that was the lowest bid, was it subsequent to, no, that, that's when the low bid came, that's when he submitted the low bid.
I think Robbie can answer that.
The screen went blank prior to nine forty-nine fifty-nine.
Robbie?
All right, so the bidders don't know what each other's bids are. They could both put in a bid just about at the same time. One could be, and we saw this on one of the bids, one was lower, but their timestamp was, was a little bit, was, they, they were earlier. So, like I said, with, with going out to the web, things could, things could get hung up, but they each had the opportunity to hit at the last second and they don't know what each other's bids are. So one bid could be lower, which happened in one of them, one bid could be higher. It's, it's all about how it, how it gets there, when they push the button, if they're lower, there's a lot of factors in there.
It just, it just do it just a little, you know, I understand the concept. I understand the concept, right, I understand the concept. No, no, I understand y'all concerned with what, you got to be in with the screen, right? But I'm just thinking if you got it in, it would be on the timestamp. I'm, I'm giving up the chance.
If the screen went blank, it showed.
He didn't have the opportunity to submit.
The screen went blank, he had, he was the winner. He had, he got the low bid.
The, the timestamp, there's not a precise timestamp. It just says nine forty-nine fifty-nine.
That doesn't make sense. You would think with all the technology we have, when one bidder submits a bid, that technology would indicate the exact time that that bid was submitted. And if it's not doing that, it's useless.
It may have, so this, by our own admission, we've already drawn more packages to the technicals. Maybe we need to go back and.
We do it at stake.
Well, so, so Robbie had addressed that with Central Bidding as well and, and in Central Bidding being the, the second time approved by the state of Mississippi and had handled, I believe Robbie, it was over nine hundred successful reverse auctions within Mississippi, within the state.
Never had a problem.
Yes.
What does Central Bidding say in reference to this particular problem? Since they're the contractor, what did they say?
Right.
We're paying them, what did they say? Why, how did they address this problem? What was their justification for, or what did they say about this particular problem, Robbie? That's the contractor that we, we hired, pay them for.
I asked them a number of questions about something like this happening, happening. I asked them about the bidding tool or the bidding bot that, that we discussed. They said if, if someone had a bidding bot, they would want every, every auction. That's, they said it would have been that way. You wouldn't have seen so many being split with this. They said that they have done over nine hundred, they've never seen a problem with this, they've never had any, any complications, anybody complained.
Apparently they have. So what did they say about this particular incident? Did you address them about this particular problem?
I just made the questions open. I didn't address them about this particular problem, no sir.
We need to, they need to address this particular problem.
Just a bullet point of some of the things that you.
I've got it up here.
Okay. He has some information that he does have. Did you ask, you can tell who, who you asked about that, sorry?
It was Finley at Central.
May I ask a question before we start? I, I want, if, if we can go back and they hadn't had any problems and this and that, I want to address this particular problem and I want them to answer this particular problem, not something theoretically or they've had problems in the past. This particular problem, they need to be asked, what happened, why did it happen and who's responsible for it? Because these gentlemen, businesses are dependent upon this.
Yes, sir.
And that's my, I called Robert about it, I asked him to find out the backend, how it works, explain it to me. I got on the phone and I listened as they had the conversation, so that's my fault. I didn't want to tip anyone's hands, so I didn't tell him to ask about warrant paving specifically.
Well, not so much about warrant paving specifically, just the process.
We got.
Oh, I know, I was just saying, I'm taking it off Robert.
And this board is responsible for, for equitable and our treatment of the businesses. I wanna know from them why this happened.
We can get him. Yes, sir.
Yeah. But you do, you did ask them some questions as to what happened in a situation like this, so theoretically.
Like this? Like. I'd like to hear what they see. Go ahead.
Can a bidder utilize a bot and autonomous program to place bids? If there's an IT personnel, personnel who would have better knowledge, please let us undertake on this. While it is potentially possible for someone to use a bot, this is not something we have seen.
What's a bot?
An, an autonomous program that will automatically place the bid right before it ends. It will see the lowest bid, it will place it.
Is that illegal?
It should be.
Should be.
It should be.
Because what it's doing is giving somebody the advantage to hit it right quick before somebody else has to get off.
It's like eBay. On eBay, you go bid on something, then you can set it to bid at ten dollar, a hundred dollar increments until it gets to the lowest amount, it just automatically does it. But it's the same thing here.
The reason it's not illegal is because nobody knows what it is.
It's not.
To me, theoretically, if you're gonna have an electronic bid, there shouldn't be any to it. They shouldn't until, until somebody just says, the heck with it, I can't go any lower and I surrender. So theoretically, on an electronic bid, there should be no.
Screen went blank.
No, because Jody had it put off at a certain time. No, the good size, had he left that anti-snipe it on there, they would have had time to have that and it would have went out. So I would say never, ever do another one of these bids without that anti-sniping.
I think it's landshapers. Okay, can we let him finish and then we'll go ahead? So he's almost finished.
This, this is actually a long. Let's, let me just highlight the points.
Okay, just highlight the points.
I do, I can make, I can get it to you guys. Why don't I just do that?
Okay.
Right quick.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I'm sorry ma'am, go ahead. Would you stand and give us your name and your. Marie Parker Landshaper Incorporated. Address.
I wanted to know why.
This is Robert Parker.
Why did it go blank on my screen?
Mr. Parker?
Parker, you have to come up.
It went blank on the body else's screen.
You have to come up here so it can get on the microphone.
That is my.
I'm trying to get it.
Idea of why did it go blank on my screen and it didn't go blank on the body else's? We pushed the buttons and it went down after we had, we didn't get the order to sign, then it went black on my screen. Why did it go black on mine but didn't go black on the body else's?
Like blank on his.
Because it was over.
Yes.
That would have gone outside and put, she'd have got, she'd have got the reason.
The clock, the timer that they gave us, just like we had the timer to see exactly how long to bid, they did as well. So when you are going down by that timer and if you looked on there, those two bids weren't about one penny each, they were like fifty cents each, twenty-five, three dollars each. So there was plenty enough time. So my question today is simply this. We knew what time the bids were going to begin, we knew what time the end date time was.
That's the problem.
Had not, had we not agreed to those terms that you guys set for us, had this been reversed, we wouldn't have even been here today because they just rightfully said they would have won. And by using the data that they presented here today underneath the terms that we all went in through to whoever the lowest bid was, in this case, with the lowest amount, which was landshap. That was what we all agreed upon when we sat there at that computer. We had the exact same opportunity that they had. It could have went our way or their way or any other competitor's way at that time. So with that being said, if there's something that's gonna happen for the future, it's possible. Those things are up for discussion, but to make a decision on something that we've already done, that's already been approved, that's what's unfair and unjust.
But I don't think they, I don't think you understand what happened, I mean, once, what they showed on the screen, because their screen went blank before the end of the bid and they were not allowed to make a final bid because the screen went blank first.
He just said his own self, that he doesn't know exactly what time those little numbers did. When the bid, when the machines went blank, our machines went blank as well. It was over. We didn't know whether we got it or not. It went blank. You don't find out until later whether you received it. Nobody knew immediately whether you won it or not.
I, I just could say, and, and that, and that, that really is the biggest, uh, the biggest problem with the auction. It, it's not finding out immediately the bid results. Having that gap between, it's equivalent of having open sealed bids and you open up some of them and then you go in the back room and then fifteen minutes later you come out and say, here's the, here's the low bid. We didn't read it out loud in public, but, you know, now fifteen minutes have passed, here's your low bid. It, it's, it's no defect in the way Landshaper approached the process versus us or, you know, it's just the fact that there's that gap there. Uh, it's just inconsistent with the way the public, the public purchasing tactics are set up to allow kind of open transparent viewing of, of, uh, the public person process. Having, having that, having that downtime where in theory, you know, there could be a chance for a last look, regardless of what occurred in practice, you know, the, the intention is not just to avoid actual corruption, it's to, it's to avoid the possibility and the appearance so that everybody has confidence in the public person's action. And having that gap there again, that, that's the, you know, that's the biggest problem that, that's, you know, hard to cure. You know, like I said, you look back at the data, well, there's a timestamp going down to a second, it's not very precise. That still doesn't eliminate, even if you got it down to a hundredth of a second or a thousandth of a second, that doesn't eliminate that gap. And you're asking, just say, okay, well, there's this black box it gets into and there's some time. You don't know what's going on, the public doesn't know what's going on, but, you know, five to twenty minutes later, we're gonna give you the, the auction results. So, to me, that's just, you know, inconsistent with the way every other person process works and, and is what really makes this kind of an incurable defect.
Well, let me tell you something, I think we should have central, what's the central bidding? What's the central bidding here? Explain to us their issue about, uh, uh, a screen going blank and not having an opportunity to. Apparently a bid was submitted subsequent to the screen going, uh, blank.
So, you're, she's saying that she bid after the screen went blank? I'm saying when.
What she's saying.
Is this, did she bid, did y'all bid after the screen went blank?
She pushed it, but it went all the way out. And then she sent it, she said, oh.
What did they tell me?
Uh, did those people come up? It went blank after we had pushed it out, we had put it in the bin. Can I say one more thing?
But he's went blank, he put his in.
I agree with that.
You were the last person that you, and when you put your bid in, you were the last person that you saw on the screen.
If, if the screen would have went off and it was said he had the low bid, I wouldn't be sitting here.
I know.
I would be terrified.
He did not have that opportunity. He didn't see the screen. He was the last bidder he saw and his screen went bid, and he won the bid.
What happened to his screen? It go blank?
It wasn't his screen, it was the operation, it wasn't necessarily his screen.
He didn't have that courthouse.
Screen he was looking at in the courthouse.
May I ask a question? Jody.
Yes.
The bid that he issued just before the screen went blank, what time was that?
So, that's the timestamp that I had, uh, I'd sent everybody and I had.
Tell me what it did.
So, so, we're talking about the, um, asphalt in place.
But I'm trying to determine.
Yes, sir.
They submitted a bid at, at a particular time and right after they submitted that bid, he says his screen went blank. Then what time was the winning bid submitted? Was it subsequent to or after his time that he submitted his last bid or was it before?
What was the actual time?
What was the actual time?
Give us on the email, it's like.
No, that wasn't the time.
Can you put that back up?
I was committed four seconds after his.
Sure.
Four seconds after his. She told you. Let's, let me tell you what I want to know. Submitted four seconds after the test?
After the break.
After his.
Ten forty-five, fifty-five.
So, that bid, or you set this bid up for it to end at ten forty-five, is that what you say?
Right.
Yes, sir.
Ten forty-five. They did ten minutes.
That bid was submitted.
Because they started at a certain time.
She told me what.
And then they go to the next one.
There was four seconds. But you're telling me that that's four seconds, uh, Steve? Four seconds, uh, that screen went blank immediately.
They went like.
At the end of the bid.
At the, at the end of the bid.
It showed one second on, if you count it, you go four, three, two, one, blank screen. So, there was only four seconds there.
So, can I?
So, what is the problem then? If it went blank at the end of the bid, you're saying that you were, you did not physically see their bid?
I was saying I'm the winning bid with the blank.
You said your bid was the last one you saw when it went blank.
Yeah, it went blank at less than one second left, it went blank and then it showed on their screen.
Why would this bid not have showed up?
One second is a small amount of time.
Even if it was four, four seconds.
Four seconds.
It was four seconds.
There's four seconds between his bid.
And his bid. So, that would have, that four seconds would have clicked their screen and showed that, that Landshaper had it.
So, why would it have not shown up?
Hey, her bid came in at fifty-nine, right there, right before the end of it. It could have been fifty-nine point thirty milliseconds. It was just that quick. So, I don't know if it would have went on his screen and showed him that there was another bid at that point, at fifty-nine seconds.
Another thing that everyone is engaged to see is that his bid was already seventy-three. Ours was three dollars lower. So, because he thought they won, they thought they won.
That's not the issue. The issue is, is potentially is that he submitted the bid and when he submitted that bid, that was the lowest bid at the time that he submitted. And within a second or less, the, the screen goes blank. You think the bidding's over.
I mean, when.
So, there's four seconds later, the second bidder's bid comes in, which is lower, that you didn't have an opportunity to see or, or, or challenge.
There was two items that way, one of them was fifty cents difference, so, so, limestone delivered. Now, thing goes back to Ronnie Wade, what he said is when you come in, we do a open bid, like an B O T bill or a, a normal bid, everybody reads the bids out and we walk out, we know who the winner and loser are, and that's fair. But when you see this year the winner, and like I say, we recorded this because the exact same thing happened last year, to the extent it happened. We didn't record that, that was proof, so we had everybody in place this year to watch it. I mean, there's a point where, I mean, maybe we just need to buy better software, I don't know. But this has taken any fairness out of the bid.
We got a problem, central bidding needs to be here to explain this to, see what their, uh, their problem is. That's who we contract with to do this.
Okay. So, a question, I'm sorry, Tim, what I asked you about this in the time you mentioned that you spoke to Jody, there was something about an affidavit issue, is that something?
That's on the bid coming up in the bid process.
Okay.
When you go to the central bids, there were some, there was an affidavit, why were required an affidavit, I don't know, but there's an affidavit that was unsigned by two bidders. Just tough technical defect of the board has been avoided away.
I'd like to address that when you can explain it to us later.
Yeah, that's one that. There is one thing, everybody, it does matter what internet provider you're using. If you use AT&T or you use Cable One, two people press the button at the same time, those bids may not make it to the computer that's receiving that at the same moment. I mean, see, but, but it's still a question of what was.
This board is not making that determination.
Right, right.
So, central bidding is making the determination.
It's not even central bidding, that depends on what internet, am I right, Rob? Whatever internet provider you use, who do y'all use?
I'm on fiber, I'm assuming we got.
He's got a good one. What do y'all use?
We all have that, and I love hearing the whole effect, that, but we don't have all that fancy stuff that you have.
Well, it's just a, but internet provider, whether it's Cable One, AT&T, literally, if we got different providers and we press our button at the same very moment, one may take longer to get where it's going than the other, just because fiber optics faster. But, I mean, that's a problem anytime you're dealing with a computer.
I have a question for Robert. The fact that they came into this building, because this has happened to them before, did that give them any help or not really? It's your own personal internet, how's that work?
They were using that personal internet, they just came up here to see the, uh, see our screen.
And my question is to you, were you aware that this has happened before?
I'm sorry, ma'am, I missed that?
Were you aware that something like this has happened before?
Before, no ma'am, not before. We haven't had any, any, uh.
So, did y'all not complain?
I didn't have any complaint about it.
He didn't have any proof.
I didn't have any, y'all didn't have anything, I mean, I, I talked to everybody about it.
But you never took it out?
Well, I, I don't know, Jody, but I didn't have any.
And what did you tell Tim?
I didn't have any.
You didn't tell anybody?
So, I would have had everybody in place if I wouldn't have had my.
Because he didn't have proof.
I got proof now, we're not gonna argue with it, right?
But my point is, if there was a bid, I just had a, I would have, that one said something to someone.
Well, I do.
He told me about it when I was elected, yeah. And he just said, "You wait and see," and I said, "Well, if it happens again, maybe I'll be elected, give me a call." And he texted me and said, "Guess what, it did."
But you didn't call.
I didn't have any proof, you showed me that. I wouldn't give it to him.
You could have placed like.
I didn't have any proof, you didn't.
You don't want to follow.
Yeah, people call me all the time and stuff that they don't have proof. I'm not a big complainer.
Does the board need to discuss this further?
No, there's no action, he's been taking your vast central bidding to come, to come before you and answer the question. Absolutely. And you can talk to them about it. The, the bids are coming up later.
We don't have to act on the bid.
When you get to the bids, I, I don't know what's more, what's pleasanter, when you get to the bids, these two bids, the board can address whether or not to accept it as it is or to reject them or rebid it or to choose the lowest and best bidder of all of them. You have eight items, two are in dispute. So, will the board decide whether that needs to be rebid because of the problem or accept them as it is?
Would you accept it?
Do what? Everybody accepts it.
And Steve or anybody, if you ever have any issues with it, please, please make sure that you notify our county administrator or the president of the board or any board member, um, because we want, we need to know these things because you can't.
Right, like I said, I didn't personally witness it last year, so I wasn't sure what the exact situation was. He just called me and told me that we won and then thirty minutes later he goes, "Oh, we didn't win," so.
Well, we need to know these. We were sent a request by the state recently to Mr. Webster Bill Down, asking for any issues that we'll have with this reverse auction because we're trying to eliminate this and go back to the city board. And that would have been helpful information that we could have included.
We are accumulating things with M A S as well as ourselves to send to the state because they are reconsidering is just how far they go with it and we need help.
Right now, we don't have the option, so they'll just change the legislation and give us the option.
So, the board wishes to take this into consideration, discuss it further as we move down to.
Well, I think we get to the bid.
Get to the bid. Thank you for coming, thank you all for coming and now we'll move on to, um. Just, all we have to do is make it. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Meter install group LLC. Let's have some quiet. Board to confirm the resolution of Harrison County Development Division uh, in the reference reward, awarding the contract to Meter Installers LLC in the amount of ninety-five thousand, forty, forty-nine dollars for purchase of the installation of the new electric smart metering system. And authorize the board president to execute all necessary documents. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second discussion, I just hope that they make sure these things are, have been tested because it appears that a lot of these lights on in some cities are having problems. So, I hope these have been tested, they don't have problems.
Then, can we, uh, we send a note to them, ask if they've been tested properly?
They have a history.
We're no. We really feel. Bill?
Somebody out there hollering, "I hate you."
No, ma'am, come on up. Please. We've done so, thank you, Bill.
Bill, we have a motion section on the floor, uh, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
To prove your meter, uh, purchasing of the meter. But have y'all done, make sure that those meters have been tested, uh, uh, or have been in other places used? Because there seems to be a problem with, with these electronic metering situations. So, I just wanted to know that, you, you, y'all put a little history on.
We did, and, um, we joined the rural association board a couple of months ago and they vetted this company and recommended the company and their service. Um, so, we, we did all that before the bids were, before the bids came in and then double checked them once we went through the.
And, and I think if I remember my backup on this, there seems to be a big discrepancy in the laws that you have to be, as I understand.
Yeah, local company that was.
One was two hundred and some thousand dollars and this one was ninety-one, ninety-five thousand. How can you have that difference in a bid unless one made out of wood and one made out of gold?
Well, you got one Walmart and one Tiffany's.
Oh, that.
Just their width.
Yeah, that's, that's, uh.
I don't know about.
Usually when bids, when you got such a discrepancy in a bid like that, it kind of red flags. And that's what red flagged me on this.
That was brought up by the commission. The answer to that question is the high bid was a local guy that was trying to get in to do something and didn't know how to do and had to pay a lot of people to help him get it done. The low bid was the company that's coming to do it, that are guys. And what we originally budgeted was about a hundred and twenty thousand, so that, that, that other number wouldn't have worked for us. So, even if I was dealing with.
Look at that information.
This has been two years I've been working on getting this to this point because it, it helps our customers with accurate meeting, they can reading, they can pay online and it takes us into the, where we need to be for them. And that's why you just have to cut down the road.
Now, why did it take you two years?
Uh, just bidding, internal distractions.
So, you had it in your mind, somebody could bid on it and you didn't have to call over it?
No, it, there's, there's a lot more to the story, but we basically restructured everything, went in to do events properly instead of just getting three bids from people who called on the phone. So, we started using the proper bid system through the state and all the requirements and newspaper and all those things. That's what the process is.
Not been doing that.
Not, not until I got here.
Okay, we have a motion.
They're gonna be like Gulfport System, if you.
That's what I'm talking about.
Same thing.
It's a different company that they've invented both by our, our lady Zoe that does all the water meters and by the, the state rural water association.
Is this the company that Gulfport uses?
No, you just said.
And it's not a company that's on point.
That's the two that I'm well aware of.
Yeah.
Any other questions? A motion? You have a motion? We have a motion, we have a motion, second, okay. Motion second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is agenda items, number four through sixteen, a good place to present agenda. The same appear to be repeated on matters of which all supervisors and our likely to bring. A motion? Second. Second discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Uh, under number sixteen. Seventeen. Seventeen, number seventeen, under tax assessors or spreading of this letter, tax assessor requesting extension for the twenty-twenty-four year. Twenty-five list, two thousand percent list for real and personal property, uh, until twenty-twenty-one for approval of the department of revenue.
Motion.
Motion. Second discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Number eighteen is order spreading the, spreading all the minutes of personnel, personnel policy handbook for the tax assessors office adopted by Paula Plonner, uh, tax assessors, uh, January one, twenty twenty. Motion?
Motion.
Second discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carried. Number nineteen is order acknowledged and received and approved petitions for. Number nineteen is order acknowledged receipt of an approving petition for decreases to 2018. Real property wrote in as recommended by the success of motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed. Motion carried. Order not received of an approving petition for decreases to 2019. Real property wrote as recommended by the tax assessor. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed. Motion carried. Tax collector, number twenty one, is order spreading of the minutes of four and or changes to the Harrison County Tax Collector's Office as listed on, and the final payroll, work and personnel department. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Not so much a discussion about this, just tax collector.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed. Motion carried.
My question on the tax collector is, I received some calls. I don't know what we discussed or did we discuss anything or maybe a no brainer in terms of the late fees, because there was quite a few people that was coming trying to get their tag from the time that we was kind of on schedule to now, hours, even off, it actually closed. And now that they come in and get their, get their tag, they've been assessed for late fees. So that was just a question that's been coming to me. Though, though we don't be able to do anything with that. They, the four people did not talk to pay. They didn't question the, the system, but they know it was unfair. It's gonna be up to the state to make that determination. But I think they have done something. We'll just have to look at it and see.
So.
We want to make them to, they waived certain fees. I know I didn't look the tag.
So if they paid in the state, they, they would be refunding through the state?
Don't, I'd have to go look to see if it gets the late fee. And so, I mean, we can look at it and see. And we may have to make a request to the department of revenue to do that. Yeah, I think, I, I agree that they shouldn't be assessed the late fee if all this was closed. The office, the office is not supposed to be closed. Who knows that?
Yeah, but it was.
So, so I agree with you that there probably be some way that we can make sure it's legal. We can do that. We may have to get the, the department of revenue to staff it.
Are you going to call them, Tim, or do you want me to call?
So, so you'll.
Thank you.
I like all of them. Because I always want money every time I call them.
Okay. Thank you.
More money.
And while we have paused, um, we have had a death in the family, so to speak, in our, in our county family. Uh, Mr. Burton.
Darrow.
Darrow has passed away. Could we have just a small moment of silence for him and our, pray for our Tracy and her husband and their loss? Thank you.
I might say that he's known Burton for many years. As a matter of fact, he, he and I worked together in Long Beach, due to district for many years. He's an outstanding gentleman. So I just wanted to say that.
Hate to lose him. Okay. Under county engineer, order approved the payment of engineering estimate number two in the amount of $22,276, six cents, and engineering estimate number three in the amount of $21,867.74 to Pickering Incorporated for federal aid project, hashtag, what should I say? STP, number S, S T P nine one three eight zero 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 three L P A slash one zero seven nine zero four dash seven zero one zero zero zero, Landon Road widening, Harrison County payable from one five zero dash three zero zero dash five 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 as recommended by Jackie Turner P E, Harrison County Engineer, um, and approved, we approved that April, uh, July, I'm sorry. We approved that July one, twenty nineteen. And that's item number nineteen. And a motion? Motion? Second?
Second discussion.
Okay. One, one moment. Can you call Jackie in here, please? She's coming in.
Oh, Pam, is, is, is that the wide road meaning that we're coronating with the city of Gulfport? Or is that the Northern Canal Road to Interstate ten, and we're having a problem with the intersection?
That's what my question is.
Okay. I have a question for you on number one. On, uh, go ahead.
Jackie, uh, on, uh, number twenty, twenty-two, the, the engineering estimate, said number two and number three. If that's the project from Canal Road to Interstate ten, and we're having problems there at Canal and Landon Road with the power company, Kim's aware of, is that it? Or is this the one where we're working with the city of Gulfport to widen?
Yeah, this is, this is the widening from home in and out to thirty-fourth and.
Got it. That's all I know. So that makes, this question that I have, have we determined where that funding is coming from? When it does occur, and I believe that.
Well, it's got, this account is the right one.
Pardon?
My wife.
This account on here is the road. I imagine Ken wasn't anticipating that, because that, I don't, it, that wasn't budgeted.
That's not in.
That's not in it.
Budgets.
We've got, we've got to determine, because there's gonna be some more costs coming down the road once the construction, not only the engineering costs, but some construction costs. You've got to find out how we're gonna pay for that two, three hundred thousand dollars that was gonna cost.
I know back about two months ago, I put all the numbers together and reviewed it with Jennifer, but I'm not sure where that fell out.
We agreed to do that without, without, this has been several years ago, we agreed to do that. Nobody bothered to come up with how we were gonna pay for it.
You're talking about the match?
Unfortunately.
Pardon? I'm sorry, I turned to, you're talking about the match, right?
No, no, there's no match. This is.
Yes. Yes, this is the match part. This is part of the match.
But two hundred and some thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's plus the period.
Close it. Something, I think, some fund money's gonna have to be, uh, coming out of some fund project, uh, excuse me, some fund monies for this that's been done or a part, somebody else, but the road department, it would be unfair to Kim with this in the road department, because it hasn't been budgeted. Oh, we take it out of your budget. That's just. You're wrong here. I, I don't think we'll solve that problem now, but you better be prepared, because we approve in these, uh, estimates. But that's for that particular project.
It is for that one, and there's, there's a little bit of variety of how it can end up falling out with the estimate. And I'll get that summary back together and try to get it back before everybody, before the next one.
But these are just estimates that is the cost.
Correct. And then there's also special match credit that may or may not come into play that'll affect that match. So we can, we can get that all back refreshed again.
But these are just potential costs, and plus, that's just the engineering costs and not the rest of the match, which is gonna be close to three hundred thousand dollars. Nobody bothered to, this isn't going right along. Nobody bothered to tip one. Now we don't pay for it.
It's, uh. So that's our match, the three hundred thousand.
It's the estimate. She's gonna work out that detail. Do we want a present? Move a motion second?
I don't want to put it in because we, we already into it.
The motion is second. We have a second?
Sure.
All those.
Yes.
Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed. Motion carried. Okay, number twenty-three, is order for the payment of the invoice, number twenty-three, four, eight, one, for personal engineering services in the amount of $15,995 for Brown Mitchell and Alexander Incorporated for the emergency bridge and road bridge, project number S A twenty-four zero 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 one six one. Quayles Delil Bridge Road, Quayles Delil Road Bridge, excuse me, Harrison County payable on the amount three. Three fifteen, three hundred five five five, and recommended by Jackie Turner P E, Harrison County Engineer. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? I would say.
That's, that's that emergency money that would access to replace this bridge.
Exactly. And that's in my, is that, no, that's not mine. That's not, that's not mine. And we have also a bridge that's been delayed.
That's a, that's a.
Yeah, it's Long Beach, but two and five have one that's been delayed on down the road.
That's my, that's where this must come from.
Did you take my money? Well, that's enough, right?
I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed. Motion carried. Number twenty-four is order acceptance subdivision application construction plans and application fee, check number ten forty, in the amount of $374 in North Swan subdivision base two and sixty-two lot located, located, which is for sixty-two lots located in supervisor's road district five, recommended by Jackie Turner P E, Harrison County Engineer. Motion?
Motion.
Second. Um, discussion. Under discussion, um, we have in this new subdivision landscaping and also a park. And it has been told to us by the developer that they will have an O H O A that will be responsible for maintaining that.
And they're here if you have any questions for it.
Okay.
Who is?
The developer. Uh, the developer and Danny are all here.
The issue that I have, and I think Zunding has, I think Tim understands it, how, how many times that we get complaints after the H M O.
H O A.
H O A. I say it H M O every time. I don't want to, it's a whole different project. After the homeowners association, I'll just say that. After the homeowners association, after the developer leaves, the homeowners association is never developed, it's never set up, and you're left with it just out there hanging. So they, somebody's gotta take care of the parks, so guess who that is? So what, what some cities are doing, and I really think it's a great idea, is that they have made it part of their policy that if a developer has certain amenities, such as landscaping and the parks that we own, that they develop and establish the H M O before they ever leave. And, um, in order for us to uphold, they will, um, help us with, they will have the responsibility adopting, adopting the rules, regulations, bylaws, setting them up, having the members pay, set the fee, and then the, um, members will be responsible to maintain what the developer says they're going to. And we can do this, uh, and not by holding their final plat. We will approve their final plat when the H M O is established.
H O A.
H O A. When the homeowners association, there you go, homeowners association is developing.
Um, may I, I'll just play that with Zach again. So I guess this is a question for the developer. When, when do they think the H O A is gonna form?
My opinion?
It brings us out there.
So far to be formed.
The name's gotta be sold.
That's right.
Page one, two, and three, and then do an H O A, or they're gonna do.
Can't have an H O A until you got these, that's the problem. So until they buy, now they should, their, their covenant should set up the procedure. Probably could make them draft bylaws, the, as part of their covenants.
They're doing that in DeIrraville, and it's working out fine, because most of the houses are already purchased by the time that the last house.
As long as you got people, that's fine. People will run the, the problem with H O, the ones we've dealt with over the years. Are usually HOAs that did exist at one point in time. And then what happened was some, you know, it's like most organizations, you got somebody good and gung ho, they work just fine. Like I have a HOA down in Orange Beach, and our president is wonderful. Uh, but the next president will have a problem, because he's not gonna do what she done. And so what happens is somebody gets disenchanted, and the thing just falls apart, and then nobody does anything. And you remember, we had those somewhere up there. We were doing that water sewer Palmer Creek. And we actually had a meeting, we called a meeting of the HOA, if you remember. And we helped them reconstitute their HOA so we could get easements from them and do the water in sewer. So, but that was, that was an active HOA that eventually, because somebody got mad at somebody or, you know, didn't like what somebody was doing, so they quit participating. Once nobody's running it, they'll be close to doing something.
They put a lead against your property in some some.
They can, but they don't. I mean, we've had several of these come up over the last ten years where the HOAs have.
This falls back on the county every single time, and this is a way that we can have some type of.
But can you, can you put in the subdivision approval document, uh, that specifically states that the county is not assuming responsibility for those parks? And I think that's what you need to do, that it is up to the H O, uh, H O, whatever. I got me confused.
You've got sixty-two families screaming at you. You're gonna.
Yeah. That's a problem. It's a problem all over this county. Mr. Flager, his point and his, and, and that guy developed the subdivision back in the twenties, I think it was, and he's got parks everywhere, public parks, you know, the county had maintained, they had set up over the years. But about once a year, somebody comes up and starts complaining about, there are some of them that they do maintain, but most of them are just lots that he says public, cause of public parks. And so this is ongoing. And from time to time, we have individuals say, we want to use that lot to put a pier up and people let them do it. And, and so making sure it's open to the public, people, public that can use. It's just a, it's a problem you have to deal with kind of on a case by case basis. I don't know that you can, you can pass all the rules you want, but what ends up happening.
I think this policy might help, because it, it, it says that it, I mean, it is a policy, it's something to work with, it's something we can say, look, here's the policy. The developer has the luxury of developing whatever and leaving and never having to look back.
And it increases the value of his lots when he has those.
You can't, there's nowhere to keep those HOAs going. That's the problem. None of the cases we've dealt with where we've had a problem.
I understand that. This is a policy that maybe helped that. We've never taken any steps to enforce the, to force our developers to take some of their responsibility when they develop these things. And, and the, the parks increase their value, they, you know, they.
We all agree with that. I guess the, the issue is how we're gonna do that. We can ask them.
No, the way, the way that, one of the cities in DeIrraville and your district's doing it is that they say, you know, all this has to be established, you have to have so many members, I don't know how many members, but you have how many, how many houses you've sold by the time that you in that sixty-two homes. There's sixty-two homes here, and I know, or sixty-two lots, and I know before the final plat is finished, um, they're gonna have some of them sold, or they're gonna be in the wrong business.
And all I was trying to point out is most of the problem we've had with the, the HOAs, or where the HOAs, it's been a year later, the HOAs had fallen into, into disuse, and until a problem came up that nobody wants to do anything about it. And that, that's where you're gonna, you can pass, it's okay to make the developer do that, but don't expect it to cure something ten years from now.
It's gonna cure some. I mean, set North Swan subdivision, or Swan Lake subdivision's been working forever. Now, they fight and bust and carry on, but they are very effective. Uh, they pay a, a different price, because they're wanting a different light fixture. They've got different signs, and they're doing great, and they've been in operation for a long time. So, and they're on the same road. So let's have the same quality.
As we can.
If we can.
All for it.
Okay. And, and I have, there's drawbacks to everything. Not everything works, but this is a, must be the step I'd like the board to vote on, and let this developer here know that we're gonna do that. So, anyway.
Harvey, sorry, what do you want to do?
We, uh, where, where were we on our motion, Chloe?
Just, as it is written, but just as it's read right there.
It's read. We're under discussion. We've had a motion and second.
Yeah, the motion is second.
You probably want to, not particularly to this particular subdivision, but adopt a policy in reference to parks and subdivisions that would be applicable to all of them.
Well, I think it should be to all developers.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, all developers. This one does have a park, and it also has landscaping.
And you want to make sure that that policy that's applicable to this particular.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Which, I'm like, can we do it from?
Yeah.
Yes.
They need to talk about subdivision policy if they're all part. Yeah, they need to talk about subdivision policy if they're all parks.
If they have amenities that we, and also it's happening in areas, you know, where we have retention ponds, you know what happens to those, they grow up, they have trash in them and, anyway, so, so let's, uh, shall we vote on this subdivision or should we do?
Can I make a suggestion or if you want something that will be effective, put in our subdivision ordinance that if they have amenities and the HOA is not taking care of the amenities, so the county has to go in, we can assess the lien against their property, I'd research and see if we can do that, but if you want something effective, the problem is, we have one of the dam, I don't know where it was, the HOA is supposed to take
Either where that is, that's your district, the dam.
Supposed to take care of the dam and, you know, we tried to get that one to re, re, you know, constitute they would ever do it, so I don't know whatever happened to that problem, but ultimately if you want some teeth in it, let's try to figure out if we can make it where if the county does have to go in, fix the detention pond or retention pond or, or the park, that we can assess all the property ownership in the subdivision, that would probably be more effective than anything if you want to look at that and see if that's possible.
Well, we can work on this, is we could add that to it, both of them have the lien, I mean, the final plat, because that organizes it and lets everyone know that is buying a house, that they're going to be part of a homeowners association, not a HMO, but a homeowners association. Uh, Jackie?
I, I was thinking the same thing.
I'm sorry, missupervising.
Um, I was thinking the same thing, but maybe in two layers, maybe if we can do a policy that incorporates a requirement to have a covenant in place before the final plat and that allows us to have that in place that identifies the covenant, identifies contact information and the requirements and then also add to the subdivision regulations that in the, in the event that that is not effective, that the county then has the ability to act in place of that HOA and assess the homeowners on a prorated amount.
That would be effective.
And that would give you both layers.
If the county could do that, I mean, if you could actually literally say that if the HOA is not functioning, the county would have a right to sit in, do what's required by the HOA, then we assess all the lots individually like taxes, that would be a tax if we could get that in there.
This would be a countywide.
Yeah.
Countywide.
Back for research and see if we can do that, maybe get a little.
Do we have a motion?
Well, we, right now just number twenty-four, this was on the discussion, I guess it needs to be prepared for the adoption.
Yeah, we can, we can go ahead and vote on this one, we can have that policy after all.
And they have to understand that they, uh, they'll be subject to this new policy. We don't want to brand farm. Okay, I don't, do we need amendment to that, that the new policy would be? Tim, can this, can this, can our new policy be, um, are you listening?
Mm-hmm.
Can this new policy be, uh, subject to this, um, to this new policy, this subdivision be?
You've got to research. We've got to have a policy before it's going to come effective against the subdivision.
So that this subdivision will be?
What you said, Tim, if we approve this particular application, subdivision application now, would that, would that policy be applicable to it even though we approved it before the policy?
You don't have the policy.
You don't have the policy, so it wouldn't be applicable.
But we can, but let us research, I think we've come up with a policy and a procedure that will solve the problem.
This is an application.
Right.
This is only an application, it cannot, and the application, we cannot say that it's subject to this.
You're going to have a policy hopefully adopted before the final approval and that may then be, which can, we can apply a policy to an application.
When we review that policy and consider it, can we specifically say that it applies to any ongoing subdivisions that have not reached final plat yet, so it would apply then?
So we can have a good language in it, okay.
But sure, it's a part.
And we'll let them know upfront, if that's what that, okay, I just want to make sure.
Let them know upfront, that's a possibility, because someone blinds off, someone's already signed their application to go forward, you'll come back and go by way.
Yeah, but we can tell them because he's just.
This is something that's required usually anyway, they have an HOA that's in there, so we're always saying is you're going to have to enforce that's what we're telling them.
Yeah, everybody, because he just said, we're going to put a park in and the HO, H?
HOA.
The homeowners association is going to be the one responsible for it, so what we're going to do is just give him, well, here's the HOA, I mean, the H, you know, the HOA, uh, rules and regulations that you have to finish before we give you a final plat.
And, and really, I will tell you that, um, on all three of these, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six that are similar, they have all indicated the intent to have an HOA responsible for the public amenities and so they are indicating in their construction plans that intent and so in my opinion, all we're doing is saying before you get a final plat, we're going to enforce what you told us you were going to do.
So it's going to have some weight. That's good, okay, well, we've lost two members, but all those in favor signify by saying aye, all opposed, motion carried, thank you. Number twenty-five is order accepting subdivision application site improvement plan for application, check number one thirteen in the amount of four hundred and forty-two dollars for Landon Green subdivision base three, four, five with ninety-six lots located in Harrison Supervisor voting district two as recommended by Jackie Turner P.E., Harrison County Engineer, she's not here, she's Harrison County.
Motion.
Second, discussion, are there all those in favor?
Thank you, bye.
I say aye, all opposed, motion carried, thank you, world. Number twenty-six is order accepting subdivision application site improvement plan and application fee number one twelve in the amount of four hundred and seventy-four dollars for Sanctuary Trail subdivision, one hundred and twelve lots located in Supervisor voting district five as recommended by Jackie Turner P.E., so which will be your motion?
Motion.
Second, discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye, all opposed, motion carried, anything, we have one more that, uh, policy that we're looking at, we'll bring up later, at later date about the trucks of wetlands in back lots that people are using, um, we discussed that.
Yeah, we're trying to look at, um, not allowing them to be part of the private lots and that they would have to be part of the public land or HOA maintains, rather than allowing private lots to contain the wetlands and then have them encroached on by individual owners not even realizing what they're doing, so it'd be better if we could do that.
But they're doing it still in them and then causing flooding and it's just.
It's those wetlands, you can do that.
Well, they're doing incrementally with a, a, like a wheelbarrow full rather than a truckload, so nobody ever notices over time it builds up and changes the character.
So, and they know it's not their land.
Don't care about the flood, let it go.
Yeah.
Gets out of here.
Yeah, that's right, I've got one like that.
We're good.
That's four.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, under personnel, is order complying with the county administrative personnel changes and listed on file with the payroll department and personnel department, motion?
Motion.
Second, discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye, all opposed, motion carried, number twenty-eight is order concurrent with the road manager personnel changes as listed on file with payroll department and personnel department, motion?
Motion.
Second, discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye, all opposed, motion carried, number twenty-nine is order spreading on the minutes, personnel changes of the sheriff's department, uh, as listed and on file with payroll department.
Motion.
Motion, second, discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye, all opposed, motion carried, number thirty is order approving payment as listed to pay from court on motion.
Motion.
Second, discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye, all opposed, motion carried, number thirty-one is order ignoring CDO, uh, reverse auction twenty, twenty-one annual term bids received, the annual twenty-third, twenty twenty for groups, ten dash three limestone dash, ten dash four crushed concrete, ten dash seven A asphalt plant pickup in place and in place at any Harrison County location and authorizing the annual term award of each group to be tabulated with the lowest bidder being the best bidder and principal supplier and the next to the lowest bidder being the alternate supplier as recommended by purchase state clerk. I think we should go get the rest of the corporate.
From Washington, I don't know, but I'll make a motion to accept all bids except the ten seven A asphalt pickup and in place.
Okay, while you're, while you're doing that, we have, um, there's a non collusion affidavit that's to be included with the bid, so it's non collusion affidavit and it's also an affidavit stating that the company that's doing the bidding, they have no officers, participants, anybody in their company that's, that's been barred from doing business with federal or state agencies. So in that, we had the Warren paving for the ten four crushed concrete and for the asphalt in place and asphalt pickup a plant, their affidavit was not notarized, it was signed, it was not notarized and then in the same part of that, we also have another affidavit turned in now, and, and then also Warren didn't have their affidavit notarized for the limestone, they didn't for this one and then also Vulcan Materials, their affidavit for limestone.
They're not a little better, Vulcan's not a lot.
Okay, but they are in, let's just say that the lowest bidder couldn't perform and the next bidder couldn't perform, then it goes to the next.
Is that, is, are those significant enough to reject a bid or is that just some technicality that the board can decide, Tim?
That's a technicality that the board can wait and choose to accept the bid, so they, they had the affidavit on one of them and they just, and they actually had the affidavit that just didn't get notarized, so that's a technical, it doesn't affect the bid, it's a technical violation, the board can choose to wait.
But I still won't be careful on two bids that are.
Two, you're, you're taking out for approval.
That's one, and that's ten seven A asphalt plant pickup and it says in in place.
So the one they were disputing was the, was the asphalt in place.
That's two.
There was two of them.
Thirty-three fifty.
Crush limestone delivered.
That's crush limestone, not that.
The dense aggregate.
The asphalt in place was not an issue, excuse me, the asphalt at the plant was not an issue, that wasn't one of the.
Their attorney's here, he can tell us exactly.
Yeah, so it's the, the, eight twenty-five, eight dense aggregate, crushed limestone delivered was one of the events we showed in the hot mix, uh, since asphalt in place.
In place, okay, I would, I would make the motion to accept them all, except the two described, the, uh, the crushed limestone and the asphalt in place and also the motion should include.
Waiving the defects.
Waiving the defects.
Technical defects.
Technical defects in reference to the affidavit.
You have a motion, second. Second, discussion, any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
May I ask also on the ones that were not, were not accepting them?
Motion carried.
I'm sorry.
What's that?
Now, now, sorry.
He asked whether on the ones that were not, were not accepting those, you have made a motion on those two yet.
Those have not been accepted.
Because you had voted on it, so.
They're excluded in this motion because they listed in the motion, I mean, excuse me, in the, uh, the procedure, excluding those two.
Because when you're going to take action on those two, we're going to make sure table them or.
I, I think we need to table those, that would be the appropriate action, I think this should be cleared up.
I'll make the table until we can get the bidding passed.
Second.
The motion is second to table the two, um, in question, the limestone and asphalt in place. Okay, and although we have a motion, and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye, all opposed, motion carried, um, the other ones, how's that, are you clear on the first one and we did?
Well, you know, it's so complicated because you lump everything together, I think they should have been all listed separately to make it easier because now we're going to have to separate all the backups over again, so, yeah.
Can I make a motion?
We'll prepare an order.
Can I make a motion, it's to be, to prevent this from probably happening, and we separate these things.
To the reference. That's not a problem.
And I think that needs to be, what you're talking about needs to be made clear with that contract.
Well, Jody, you can turn that on and off, but like, I mean, that's not, isn't that any difficult?
We, we make the decision with the bidder.
On that, we.
That's just, you're right, we need to make sure.
And I'd like to point out, when Robert and I were on the final Whiskers Supervisor, they did say that they can change the times, he said that that would be no problem, he said, thank you for bringing our attention, maybe to the five minutes is thirty minutes or maybe, so they can do that.
And can they set the, like, the bidding to twenty-five cents or fifty cents or whatever it is?
I would probably, to alleviate the one penny.
Yeah.
And so, settle, we'll move on to purchasing part number thirty-two. Sorry, sheriff. Okay, under sheriff, number thirty-two, recognized as sheriff and or is designated representative, as he reports, the person's currently housed in Harrison County jail facility and discusses other matters.
Morning, five hundred and thirty is what our total number is in the jail, have a hundred and nine at the work center, twenty-one misdemeanors, seventy-six females, ninety-six that are cleared state arrest and seventy-four federal inmates. And I do have one issue for executive session with security.
All right, number thirty-three is order approving purchase of twenty inch electrical self-propelled twenty twenty G, uh, G R twenty vertical lift for, from low quote, uh, United Rentals at a total cost of twelve thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars, available from zero twenty-nine dash two fifteen dash nine eighteen, motion?
Motion.
Second. Second, discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye, all opposed, motion carried, number thirty-four is order approving and line transfer from fund zero zero one dash two eleven dash four sixty-eight to fund zero zero one two hundred dash nine zero two for Samuel Day, Samuel Lee Day Construction in the amount of sixty-three thousand dollars to construct a metal building for the Harrison County Law and Enforcement Training Academy. Is board approved for six twenty twenty, motion?
Motion.
Second, discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye, all opposed, motion carried, number thirty-five is order accepting low quote from Brent Needcase Construction in the amount of forty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars for Harrison County Training Academy shooting house and authorizing the, um, the county administrator to transfer those funds from zero zero one dash two eleven dash four sixty-eight to zero one dash two hundred dash nine two, motion?
Motion.
Second, what is it, shooting house, shooting, is it shooting house or sheep house?
House that you shoot.
You'd call it either HOA or HMO, I guess. It's a house that, you know, it's a house that's going to be built with a, with a top to it, but it's not going to be enclosed, it's going to be like a, sorry, a three and a half, a three bedroom apartment complex layout with a kitchen, living room, everything and they'll, they'll be able to run like seven different scenarios of active shooters and everything in this house, it's not going to be live shooting, it'll be all sim guns, but it'll be, you know, the paintball guns and things like that, but it'll be, it'll be an area where they can train to, to, that's seven different ways to get in a house.
Yeah, they have those at Quatika, FBI, that's what they do, they.
I've seen it on the TV.
They have that out here, virtual.
Oh, you have that out there.
Yeah, virtual would be better than paint guns.
What?
Virtual would be better than paint guns, you've seen that.
Well, yeah, that's what the other building's for is a virtual.
Okay.
So it's going to be both inside each other, yeah.
Motion, second. Motion, second, discussion, all those. Motion second, discussion, all those who favor signify by saying aye, all opposed, motion carried. Number thirty six is order authorizing the replacement of the petty petty cash by, uh, money account in the name of Robert Dance, Drace, 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 with narcotics in the amount of five thousand five hundred and forty dollars, the payment in Sheriff's Account, zero zero one dash zero two hundred dash six thirteen, to bring the account balance to approved an amount of six thousand dollars. Motion?
Motion.
Second, discussion, all those who favor signify by saying aye, all opposed, motion carried. Number thirty seven is order authorizing the board president and the board, the board of six presidents to issuing letters to the Drug Enforcement Administration for, to do justification for utilization of senior assets for the Harrison County Sheriff's Office. Harrison County Sheriff's Office will be responsible for paying all fees once forfeited and placed in service for a minimum period of two years. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, all those who favor signify by saying aye, all opposed, motion carried. Number thirty eight is order adjudicating submission of a V J A F Y twenty Gulf States Law Enforcement Technology Initiative Grant through the Department of Justice. Application was due for electronic submission by April twenty eighth, twenty twenty. No signature required, and it does not require matching funds from the county. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second, did you miss the deadline, or, or were you?
Discussion, all those who favor signify by, by saying aye, all opposed, motion carried. Number twenty nine is order approving mileage reimbursement in county travel for the following employees. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, all those who favor signify by saying aye, all opposed, motion carried. Number four, order forty, order approving payment of five thousand dollars to Neil Schaefer in, for Harrison County Capitol, infrastructure plan project workshop, invoice number one to zero six three zero five eight eighty six sixteen, twenty twenty, payable from zero zero one dash six dash one hundred dash eighty five six. Motion?
Motion.
Second. Discussion.
Uh, discussion. What, what is, what has they done, what is this?
That's the one where they met with all the different department heads and got projects, type of projects that they would be able to try to get some funding with BP Money, they did their work, but we didn't get any projects yet.
I'm telling you.
We have a motion second, all those who favor signify by saying aye, all opposed, motion carried. Number forty one is order approving the notary, notary public, notary, notary public permission application for Jada Herman, Law Library for Harrison County improvement payment, and all needs to answer.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all those who favor signify by saying aye, all opposed, motion carried. Number com, trailer's order authorizing all transfers. Motion?
Motion.
Second. Second, discussion, all those who favor signify by saying aye, all opposed, motion carried. Number forty three is order approving payment payment.
Motion.
Second, discussion.
Discussion, uh, is it, is this one what we're contributing to the CTA?
Yes, the number is the last one.
I believe it's F, F and the last one. Why is it two different ones, is one for the beach, uh.
That's for the comfort station.
Comfort stations, and the other one is our general contribution to CTA.
No, um, the, one of them is, uh, the only one we have is fourteen thousand, that is for the sand beach.
That's the sand beach, and the other one.
We had, we paid in three different parts, we had the regular appropriation for the routes, then we had the senior centers, um, transportation that comes out of their budget, and we have this one that comes out of sand beach.
Okay, we have a motion second, we've had discussion, all those who favor signify by saying aye, all opposed, motion carried. Number forty four is order authorizing judicial to duplicate warrants as listed per, per certificate, and affidavit filed from the, with a change of card.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all those who favor signify by saying aye, all opposed, motion carried. Number forty five, order approving resolutions in matter of the regular and special home status exemption rejection by the Department of Revenue for year twenty nineteen, first and second judicial districts of Harrison County, Mississippi.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, all those who favor signify by saying aye, all opposed, motion carried. Number four agenda, forty six is resolution approving the request of West Harrison Water and Sewer District for levy to levy four mils at, um, at the law, of at the law tax on the technical property in West Harrison Water and Sewer District as provided in section seven of the enabling legislation.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, burgers.
Why would they need that?
It's not, it's not.
It's not that much.
It's not four wheels, can't lie.
It's not four mils, it's an additional two mil, we already have a two mil, and this is the additional two mil, you can go up to four mil, what they're doing, they're putting in some, uh, make the water and fuel lines, and they're going to need, need some help on that, and that's why they asked you to put in two additional mils. I normally wouldn't agree to it, this is a good project, and it will help develop that area. Yes, you know, it generates, I recall, the two mils, probably generating about thirty thousand a year.
He's not out there, he gets tired of left.
Got tired of left?
Should have run some Latin or answer. Do we have a motion?
Answer.
Okay, all those in favor.
Aye.
All of those, motion carried. Item forty seven, order approving the waiver of runoff fees of use of the Appleville Civic Center by the Mississippi State Department of Sports and Society to be held on October fourteen, twenty twenty. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye, all those opposed, motion carries. Item forty eight, order approving quitclaim D to the City of Biloxi for the Popster Aggregates and related purposes. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye, all those, motion carries.
Number forty nine is order authorizing paving improvements of various roads in city Gulfport as per term, and we have.
Motion. Second, discussion, Mr. Holloman, when I've gotten these requests from the cities on district one, they have to name the roads, these are not named, it just says various streets.
So that should be a job title.
They, they do, I think they're saying, uh, but the document's not there for us to see.
Why is it in there?
They're not in that.
I also have a question, can you not send them a resolution that is, uh, kind of like a template from Biloxi, Long Beach, and Pasquale's Channel? This resolution that I saw was ridiculous, that was the silliest, I've never seen a resolution like that from a county in my, I mean, from a city, asking for permission in my life.
Well, that, that.
They're, they're saying, they're not saying, would y'all come over here and paint the road for us, they said, well, the county.
You sent your offer.
Has come into our ca, city and offered to do all this work. That is the silliest thing I've ever seen.
We, we have sent them before, we'll be glad to send them.
They don't do any good.
I don't have, I will be glad to.
I do.
Um, and your attachments with the Gulfport resolution, they have the quotes, and so, so you've got street, they're going off corners, they're not going on the streets that they're going on, so they're using the street that's identified on the quote, and they're going like down two sides streets, there is no identifiable street in those quotes.
What do you mean, no identifiable? Not by name, public roads.
They are, they are, so, say, for instance, you're going down Hughes Avenue, and I make that up, that's not one of them, Hughes Avenue, they're saying from forty seventh street to forty eighth street off Hughes Avenue.
Well, that needs to be in here, because I make, when Biloxi or the Appleville, any of the resolution, I've told them that they have to name the streets, so now, I don't, I think they need to name this.
No, it's just a name, I mean, we just have to get it in, because my guy went out there, and they, uh, I forget, I don't have the streets in front of me, but the streets are available, because you have to estimate it, you got to get it signed before you can submit.
The one problem, this is the problem, the city council has to tell us.
Where the streets are.
So you're getting a resolution.
No, we tell them what streets are, because we're the one to go out there and.
I'm sure that.
Inter local.
No, we don't.
Tim, if I may. The inter local agreement is an agreement between us and the city, and if they want the, it's, they need to request it, they need to ask us for that. Or we need, if we want some assistance from them through a resolution of this board, we ask them for assistance, if they want something in that city.
They have our given.
Through a resolution, they ask us to do it, what they're, what that resolution states, if you read it, is that they're telling, basically what the resolution says is, oh yes, y'all want to go in, I understand y'all want to do some of our streets, so we're giving you permission to go in and do it.
That's exactly what it's saying.
That doesn't make sense under the inter local agreement.
Well, the, unless you says that the city council, that's the wrong, you have to warn supervisors, ask for request from the other, they won't give assistance, there's nothing wrong with county going in and saying, look, we're happy to pave this road, but we need you to request us to do it.
That's the inter local.
That's the inter local, so, you know, Gulfport has this viewpoint that these resolutions are somehow going to be used, the reason you're seeing the language in these resolution ways, they think we're going to use them in some annexation case against one state.
No other city does that, no other city on the Gulf, no, there's five of them, four of them, don't do that, only Gulfport. Why is that?
Why you look at me every time you say that? I live it on.
Because their attorney has a particular viewpoint that. We have to know.
I've told them about it.
They had to name the streets, they are not named.
Should be named, because otherwise, how do we know that?
We don't need to have two sets of rules, we got, they got to do this double.
I didn't notice it.
They just not in the.
That name can't be at a hack.
But the resolution, this is, this is the problem.
If you don't name the street. You may not see it on the back, but the streets are there, it's not like they know names.
I don't think I've seen it.
But Ken, if the resolution of the city council didn't tell us what street it is, we don't know that, that, that those invoices were, were approved by the city council, unless they're represented and attached to that resolution.
That's what I was trying to.
And so, if it's not in the resolution, we don't know if the city council has authorized the county to do it on the record, I mean, you've got an invoice that's attached, and we assume that's what they're talking about.
It needs to be in there, because that's.
That's how you're, that's your authority to go do it, by the city.
Well, then, what we're saying, the city put those streets on their, on their resolution.
They put it in the resolution.
They have the information on these streets, otherwise.
Like, if they adopted the two, they adopted the two ordinances as part of the resolution, these, the attached, A and B streets are going to be paved by the county, that, that's okay too, I ain't got a problem with that, it's just a matter of, if it's just a blank resolution that says we're going to pave these streets, and I know Connie doesn't like the language in there, that doesn't bother me.
Have you read it?
It's just one of the, I didn't read, I'll let Trish do that for her.
Read it.
Too smart as a male of reading.
Oh, we know, no. So I have a question, Tim, when they show each receipt from Land Shapers, it says paving off Dida Road to Sharp Boulevard to Lynn Avenue, you're saying just put that wordage into the resolution, and then, so we've got the information, we just need to put it in the.
Cause I've sent resolutions back to the city of Biloxi four, five times, and you have to, and I just had to do it with the Appleville, and it's just not fair, so if I got to follow those rules, everybody needs to follow.
It's not, it's not that it's not fair, it's not right, so, if Gulfport's resolution, I haven't looked at it, does it adopt those, those invoices as part?
It does.
It does, then that's okay.
Oh, in the wordage in the resolution, no, I'm sorry.
And let me be clear, we love to help the cities with that.
This resolution is okay, it, it says, specified that it's A through H, and it has those invoices attached.
And they are the street.
So if you're going to do it that way in any city, as long as it names.
It's a prediction of the resolution. What we're doing, when we, when we adopt that resolution, what this board is saying, Gulfport, we would love to go in and pave your streets.
I just.
They're right, based on that resolution, Tim, that the county is asking Gulfport to give us permission to go in and pave this street, they're not requesting us to do that.
Absolutely.
Just get rid of the names of the roads, get rid of the resolutions.
That's fine.
Yeah, it's no big deal, they've attached them, so just tell them to put it in there.
And next time.
You're not going to give them, take that flower language out of there, I've argued with them for years, they, they think that we're going to use that against them in annexation, and as I told them, I said, I hadn't thought of that, but now that you mention it, I may start keeping up with it. But anyway, I mean, it's not a big deal, we.
It's nothing, I, I love, we would love Beverly and I and Ken have been trying to come into the city of Gulfport and try to help our, our constituents there for years, and you, and you, and Marlon, for years, we have all helped our cities, and I have Gulfport and Biloxi, but I never have any trouble with any other city except Gulfport, and then trying not to do what the law says, which it means, ask them for something, just say, hey county, can you come over here and help us? Yes, we would love to.
I'm not for certain, but I think the inter local, does not the inter local agreement require the participating parties, for example, the cities to request?
It, it, it basically says that if, if the city wants work done by the county and the city, the city council shall make a resolution request, and the county's the system.
That's not a request of our system.
Well, I, I don't think it means literally that, that somebody, the supervisor who's, who's district is over that city, goes in and says, look, I'd like to pave these roads in here, would you get the city council and say, okay, I don't think that's what the inter local is prohibiting, if you're asking that.
And I tell you, that resolution is saying to us, listen, and they're right, I'm not saying they're incorrect, but that resolution is telling us that citizens in the city itself pay county taxes, therefore, you should pay, you should pave those streets.
Well, they get half of, half of the gas, I mean, they get half of the road money.
They get paid for that, they get paid, that's not, the road money going to them from the county.
We've been arguing with that with the city Gulfport for years, about that.
We don't mind, I know, we don't, we love helping, we love helping anybody we can, essentially our constituents in Gulfport, Biloxi, everywhere, I just don't understand why Gulfport has to make it so hard.
They think we're going to try to take advantage of it, we're not, for my, for annexation cases, so.
Yeah, I've had some discussions with them, I told them, the inter local that we have with them is the same that we have all the other cities and other counties, so I've been dealing with them for about six months on this.
And in the last annexation case.
I've been dealing with that six years or something.
And just so y'all know, in the last annexation case, not one issue was ever spoken about doing inter local agreement payment or anything, not one, that, that didn't come up in the trial at all, I wish it had have, just to break them a knot in the trials, but that didn't even come up, so I don't know why they get stuck on that, that's been, that's been years in the making, and they, you know, all, what we're really looking for from the city is permission back to do work within inter municipal limits, that's what you're looking for in the inter local.
They didn't ask permission before they laid all that.
No, I'm asking, but I think I'm, what I'm asking for is a request.
That's okay, we can make it that way, and say, doesn't comply with the inter local agreement.
And that's, and that's what, that's going to be the, that's what a bad apple is, they don't want that language.
Ken, they have to make up their mind.
I agree, I'm just, I just know.
It's not likely to have this problem of for the cities.
Same inter local.
I ain't got a problem, it's a, it's a silly game, quite frankly, of the language of the order of following inter local agreement, which is all I've ever asked to be done.
Same laws.
Well, we, you know, I don't know who's been reading these. You know, I don't know who's been reading these, when I came as board attorney, I sat down and read them and said, we weren't doing it right, so this is the way it's got to be done. That's what the law says, that's what the interlocal said. It's not complicated, the interlocal agreements. They're not five or six pages long.
Everybody else senses it.
They're just suspicious, because we won the last annexation case, they're suspicious that we're doing something to try.
I just want to be sure the streets were named.
I agree with you, it ought to be in the, it ought to be in the resolution.
I want to make sure that we, they've requested.
It can be by reference.
Everybody else.
We commonly reference a document adopted in the, so that's.
And that's your reference, so A through H here too, as a paving approval projects, and then each receipt has the exact streets, so you're saying put the names in it instead of just saying attached here to A through H?
Yes.
Okay.
Just name the streets in the resolution.
Okay. Are you telling that? What do you mean it's?
I'll get Trish to tell them this.
Well, the reason is.
They're suspicious of me.
I'm calling these points.
Well, the reason also is that if you make a search in legislature, and it's not in the title of your resolution, there's no way we can find it. We would have to open every document mentioning street for the city of Gulfport and read every document.
Calling and I fight all the time about how long the titles are.
Yes, yes, yes.
I see what you're just going to do.
But, but it's a matter of search.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I just don't understand. Why they want to be different. The shoes on the other foot, I say, hey, would you please, please come in here and say.
So you've asked them to do this before, and they're not?
This thing going on for, come on.
They won't list names in it?
No.
What's happened before? I'm just trying to understand.
Two, two separate things going on, but that we're discussing, and I think they kind of get intermingled.
They are, sorry.
The street names, we all agree, needs to be in there.
Okay.
That, that's, that's one issue, that's not really that complicated. The other issue, if you read the resolution, the resolution is not requesting us to pave streets in, in the city of Gulfport. The resolution is basically saying, look, our citizens pay taxes in there, which they are correct. So, we're giving you permission to go in there and pave those streets. It's like they're not, and that's what Tim is talking about, and they're not asking us to go do it. It's, it's sort of like, you know, we're, we're initiating a request to the city of Gulfport to give them money to pave the streets. If you read the resolution, that's what it's saying. It's not a request from the city of Gulfport through a resolution asking us, the board of supervisors, through the interlocal agreement, to pave streets. What it's saying is, apparently, the board of supervisors wants to pave streets in the city of Gulfport, therefore, we're telling you, the city of Gulfport is giving us permission to do that.
So much money though.
There's two separate issues here. Now, street names is one thing, and we all understand that. But it's the way the resolution is written.
Okay.
It, it, and to me, we have interlocal agreements, we're saying that interlocal, if I, if I want something from the city of Gulfport, which, if the board of supervisors wanted the city of Gulfport to help us with something, what we would do is pass a resolution from this board asking the city of Gulfport, would you help us do A, B, C, D, and E? Okay? That's not what this resolution, they're not asking us to do anything.
They're giving us permission.
They're giving us permission to do that.
And when annexation, annexation. When annexation takes place, you are, the city is required and says, I can take care of these extra ten miles that I'm going to annex, or twenty, and I can do it within, you know, X amount of years. And nobody ever does it within X amount of years. Woolmarket was annexed for twenty years, and they still don't have water and silver in it in every year. They're working on it, but they don't have it. So, the question is, when you get into court, I guess, is, well, haven't you been paving roads yet? We've been paving, and I guess that's where they're picking that up. But the annexation, they take over bridges, they take over roads, then that's their responsibility, it's no longer ours. And we can't go in there and just start paving roads unless we have an agreement.
To me, to me, it's worse, this order is worse for them than the opposite, that is, if they request.
It's so likely.
Requesting us to pave a road is nothing more than a request for funding.
Right.
They don't have the funds, they want to pave the road, they pay taxes, the county paid my road, that's fine, supposed to do that, it's okay. Now they're saying that the county has gone in to determine these roads have not been maintained properly by the city of Gulfport, and we need to pay it. So on the record, if Gulfport's listening, I will use that if they annex a road. And you're admitting that we have determined that your road was not in good shape, need to be paved. And so.
You wouldn't even ask us to do it.
When you first explained, you're talking about two different things, that's exactly what I thought, why would you, that's admission.
To me, this order is opposite of what they're trying to, to say, but, look, that's not a big deal with annexation to begin with. Like, I said, the last one we had with Gulfport, that never even got brought up, I don't know what they're talking about.
And not only that, Tim, the last one, we, Past Christian's effort to annex that particular area. Lord, you go back in our records, and there's no telling how many roads Harrison County through the interlocal agreement has paved streets in Past Christian, and we never, never once in that court period brought that issue up.
Yeah, that's true.
And so, it's just the sensitivity of, of the, one of the attorneys that represents the city of Gulfport, that's where that's coming from. And we, Connie was mad about it years ago, when we argued, and I said, Connie, this doesn't matter, well, well. It's not something.
So they quit sending the resolution, rather than, rather than send the resolution, they did not have us pave any roads in Gulfport in the past four or five years. They didn't, none. Because that wouldn't send the resolution.
Because I told them, I told them, one, one of the city councilmen told somebody that, and they called me, and so I called him. I know, I was going to tell them. And so, I called him and, and said, look, come on, man, it's not a problem.
So they just quit sending it, so they cut it away. Right, for nothing.
So can we call the question?
Okay, call the question, I'll have him favor signified by saying, well, what are we going to do it, are we going to send this back?
We're on a motion. Did we make a motion in the second to do it?
If, as long as, would you please narrow it, I don't know if we're going to change that resolution or not, though.
Calling, do we have a motion on number forty-eight?
Yes, number forty.
We got a motion and a second.
Forty-nine and four.
Or excuse me, forty-nine.
You have a motion and a second. Mr. Jones made a motion, you said the thing.
To add the roads.
The order on the horizon. The nine is written.
As long as the.
Now, the motion and the second. We can vote the motion down, and then ask them to send us an appropriate resolution, what we consider an appropriate resolution.
Okay.
On the far.
Vote it down or not, if it did, okay. Or can we just table it and give them a chance to resemit it correctly?
That works.
It's correct, the way, the wording is not correct.
Okay, the wording.
But correctness is there because they added it yesterday.
Why don't we just, why don't we take?
I'll make a motion to table it and give them a chance to reword the resolution.
We're going to, we're going to try and reword it.
Oh, they're going to reword it, they probably need to.
Is this six months, get this back?
I'm saying, like, just say.
We can do it on Monday.
She got to say two motions on the table, and then.
No, you don't have to move that, she don't want to.
She has a, she has a table.
Two motions, table.
Okay, the motion to table, all favor, signature five by C and I. Pardon? Yes, Marlon, second. A motion to second. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, signature five by C and I?
No. I just don't get it. I don't get it.
Tell them to have it back to us by next week, and we're clear to go.
I've been working with them for four months, I'm getting this resolution, I figure we'll do it in a week.
Yeah, the only thing that I would say.
If they don't want it, they come with the roads.
We're, we're giving the money, at least do what we ask them to do on the request. When I'm asking somebody for money, I will generally do what they request from me. I asked him for a loan, and he says, you do X, Y, and Z, I'm going to do X, Y, and Z.
But I'm saying that I don't think these citizens should be penalized for anything for what words.
I don't either, I think the city councilman need to think about that.
Can I make a suggestion, because it is okay, because they reference the attachments, so the streets are identified by reference.
That's all right.
Why don't we, if we order to approve it today, then we send a message to them and say, this is not going to be approved in further unless the streets are named in the order of the resolution. And then they can go forward, all you're trying to do is identify the streets, so you got a record of it.
I think, I think it's the resolution.
It's the resolution wording.
I'm saying, the wording about the citizens.
Just send them a copy of what everybody else does.
We've done that over and over.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, so, maybe Rebecca can, y'all can talk to them.
It's a word game.
We want the wording change in the resolution. That's it, right, just the wording?
All, all I'm concerned about is the street get identified in the order, and while it's, it should be a request, my, my, whatever they call it. Uh, but the, the other language in there is just, like Kent says, it's just playing word games that don't mean anything to anybody, including the court. So I don't, I don't care that they leave that language in there, if the board doesn't care, legally, I don't care, y'all, that's up to y'all. I don't, I agree with you, we got one city out of five that had marked it to a different team.
So they need to name the streets in the, in the resolution.
That's for identification purposes, make sure it's legal.
Okay, so, I'll take the table off, and then they'll say, the only way we'll approve this is if you do A, B, C, you put this in there, and if you do that.
I would suggest you go ahead and approve this one, so, because it's referenced, and then send a message to them that if one board, if the streets are not named in the resolution, we're not going to approve it. So they know.
And you, I guess in hearing of will, the president will send with template to say, this is not for the.
If you don't get it, you're not going to.
Right, right.
So are you making a motion?
Tell, tell. Yes, I've made a motion. Make a motion, take off the table. Second, all those in favor, signature five by C and I? I oppose, motion carried now.
Now, I'm making a motion to approve the, um, order as listed on the agenda.
With the provision that we're also going to direct them to include it in the resolution in the future.
Future, they will include the name, as the other cities do.
Motion in the second, all those in favor, signature five by C and I? Oppose. Motion, oh, carries. Sorry, that's just all we're saying. All right, let's see.
City of Pettit Town will give permission to give them.
It must be planned for that annexation.
And use our voting sheet.
Order authorized the lease of the county. Lease of the county voting equipment to Past Christian for the, uh, the city's twenty-twenty special election, hell, August, the third twenty-twenty, I'm sorry.
Motion. Second.
Special election.
Yeah, some sort of election.
Call those in favor, signature five by C and I? I oppose, motion carried, lucky you didn't do that. Okay, number forty-one, is order adjudicating employment of board attorney, uh, TMC Hall and Boys Hall and Associates to represent the board in litigation matters as listed, motion.
Motion.
Second, discussion, all those in favor, signature five by C and I? Oppose, motion carried, number fifty-two, is order adjudicating tax sales of August twenty-seventh, twenty-eighteen, and August twenty-sixth, twenty-nineteen, on the tax parcel number one-three-zero-eight-oh, dash, zero, one, dash, zero, zero, nine, zero, 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 for two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen taxes arose since have, have been initiated and, and for related purposes, motion. Motion, second, second discussion.
This, this is a tax cell, it was a mapping error, which caused it to be assessed in the wrong name, the taxpayer didn't get those taxes, or the tax assessment, it qualifies to be set aside.
All those in favor, signature five by C and I? Oppose, motion carried. Number fifty-three, is order adjudicating the tax sale of August twenty-seventh, twenty-eighteen, to August twenty-sixth, twenty-nineteen, on tax parcel number one-hundred-nine-J, dash, uh, zero-one, dash, zero, zero, one, zero, zero, six, for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen tax revenues, and thus set aside for ab initio, and for related purposes, motion. Motion, second, discussion.
Property loss or development commission is exempt, there was a lease on it that had been canceled, it got assessed with a lease on it, the lease had been canceled, therefore, it was an area assessment, qualifies to be set aside.
You will present, all those in favor, signature five by C and I? I oppose, motion carried, number fifty-four, order denying the claim of Brian Taylor, motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second discussion, who is this?
Which one?
From Brian Taylor.
Oh, this is an employment claim, I recommend the board deny it, so this will. There's a reason to deny, I'll disclose that in the second session, but I recommend the board be denied, that, that starts the statute of limitations running again.
Motion in the second, all those in favor, signature five by C and I? Oppose, motion carried, number fifty-five, is order denying the claim of Annette Stevens, uh, on behalf of Anthony Wilton, Wilton? Wilton, sorry.
Thank you.
And it, uh, is seized individually and on behalf of the wrongful debt beneficiaries and heirs of Anthony LeWetton, motion.
Motion.
Second, discussion.
Same reason, I recommend the denial, so the statute will start to run again, this is a veto part claim, if they remember, if that one hurt.
Yes, sir, I have a motion and a second, we're going into the second session. A motion in the second, all those in favor, signature five by C and I? Oppose, motion carried, number fifty-six, is order spreading on the minutes of order, the second, current, 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 district appointing and setting the salary, and for support staff and compensation of Constance J. Jordan, A, C staff, attorney, attorney, uh, sector, make one, twenty, and then rate of seventy thousand, seventy, seven hundred and twenty dollars, raised currently in the F Y, approved in twenty-twenty, I mean, twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty budget, motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second, okay, I'm a little confused. Raised for current F fiscal year, I'm assuming, approved in twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, for this person, or for the person that was there for twenty years prior to that?
For this person, they have, well, it's attorneys, and they, it's apparently, I guess, let's say it's a ten-year or twenty-year, whatever, there is, it goes to that next level.
So she's, she's employed, when she has so many years of experience, she goes to the next level. So this was, was anticipated, included in the budget, she goes to the next level. Constance does an excellent job, finding an attorney, does a good job.
I got, I just want to be sure that it's not a new employee, just because the whole budget had this amount as well.
No, there, there's this base, there's this base to the statute, I mean, through the A of C. And a motion in the second, discussion, all those in favor, signature five by C and I? Oppose, motion carried, number fifty-seven, is order accepting roadway easement for property located in section seventeen, township A, range twelve, first judicial district commonly referred to as Abbey Road, and affecting and accepting the roadway only for maintenance purposes, motion.
Motion.
Second, discussion. Abbey Road, all those in favor, signature five by C and I?
So we get the, right? Abby Road is, I'm like a movie.
I keep saying, it's a song, it's a male song.
I haven't heard it somewhere, you know, uh, this, this is only for the road, it does not, specifically, it does not include drainage. It took a long time to get this easement done, uh, we've also, it's a very small road, a short road, these people still own, actually, on the road, we're getting a roadway easement. We did not get releases from the mortgage company, because it would have been called prohibited, we have a whole harmless agreement, but no mortgage companies are going to knock on the road in front of their house. So I, we do have those provisions in there that are a little bit unusual, but they have to hold a harmless many mortgage, but to save time and money trying to get that all signed.
And the reason that the drainage tissue, or the rejection to the drainage tissue is, you can't drain. You go up to the engineering and try it, and they need to understand that we'll pave the road. We took down the water from.
We took down the water from.
Circle at the end.
Right.
Yeah. Well, all that's going to be taken care of. My concern is, and I think Kim tried, is that we go and pave roads and it rains and the water, some of that, they don't want us to come out there and do something about it. Well, we, we not going to, that's part of, we're rejecting that.
Poor lady.
We made that finally clear.
We can't.
Hey, all, all those, we've had discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried. Number fifty-eight is order approve payment in the amount of thousand five hundred dollars in super, uh, support for the supplemental support for the one oh five, of one oh five, five hundred for the month of May, twenty-twenty.
Motion.
Motion, second.
Second.
Discussion.
Other counties, Pam, are submitting their little supplements too.
But we have a, a longer meeting, or shorter meeting, we can go into a lot of discussion that, that we went to through the last meeting. And, um, for the, I think it's way too long.
Some jerrys out there that we gotta know about.
Yes, we asked for. Okay, I got a motion and second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried. Number fifty-nine is order authorizing expenditure as listed to advertise, uh, duties, resources, and areas of county available, zero, zero, two, dash, one hundred, dash, five, two, two. I wish we had.
Assuming they have it, assuming they have it. They're planning on it, they're being, they're being optimistic.
Thought it was the city always did that, they must put the law into it. Supposed to be a joint.
To your commission, yeah.
Okay, motion second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried. Number sixty, discuss upcoming events at community centers and other facilities.
Okay, if I may, I'll start that discussion. Wedding still booked in May at Civic Center. Oh, then I said if you go in there and set the tables six feet apart and, you know, let them go forward, these brides do not want to change their veins and they're willing to adhere to the six-foot rule, so. I thought we were supposed to notify all those folks that, uh, those scheduled events were, you can't.
We did for April. We brought up these two events, because you have one too at Long Beach. They got weddings and we didn't want to, I said, I don't want to be the one to tell them.
Right now, Yom is the only one that has it for May. Um, District Two, Three, and Four do not have any. But District Five has, um, two different events at two different places, birthday parties, all of them are going to be open, thirty, forty, fifty. I don't, uh.
Yeah, it's not, but I would like to.
I don't want to.
Move forward and let them, like, because they booked it a year ago. And you know, if you have the state legislature, two hundred of them that showed up there, when was that, Monday, Friday? So in my opinion, as long as they can keep the six-foot distant room, I'm okay with it. I just hope that we have to have discussions.
If you want, I mean, if you feel comfortable and you feel like your facility is big enough, I'm just, I'm just not ready to open mine and police that.
Well, for these, they'll suggest theirs. But we're never actually.
That's not any, they will do another decision. We're talking about facilities that belong to Harrison County, because we're going to have to do them all.
There was.
They canceled, there was one at night, but they canceled.
Okay, they canceled.
We had discussions and I saw the position of the board was cancel all that stuff and we did it.
See, I didn't, I didn't.
I think it was a wait and see.
Oh, I thought it was a wait and see, but not to protect any new booking.
But actually, shoot for the wedding.
So I just.
And it was already booked, so we were going to see if it was, this was going to be over by this time.
That's what we were hoping.
Yeah.
But the governor lives his, uh, older, who's in the up that month.
Same as June.
The wedding is in May.
The end of this month? But the caterers have called, they, you know.
This is the wedding and they booked it a long time. No, no birthday.
So they've called to make sure that they can still get in there. Flowers, she got flowers, she got a whole industry here that's gearing up for gene, gene therapy.
My granddaughter had her sixteenth birthday and they had a drive-by. She didn't, she didn't have.
The other, the other one is the fairgrounds, they got a barrel racing, um, event, it's supposed to be kept this coming weekend and they have, you know, a lot of people there, but. And then they also have a five hundred dollars to keep the person on five thirty for whole and advertising show at the fairgrounds.
Are we in violation of governor's executive order? For what, for the weddings for the fairgrounds?
It's merely a suggestion.
So it's not really a.
Not a law, there's, there's statute.
I understand that.
I'd have to look at those license modifications, what do you do?
I, I realize it's not legal law, you know, we have to do that, but.
It's not, I don't think it is because they're going forward with the graduation.
Yeah. If we're going to tell them to stay six feet apart, we need to say, set a pick number of the same house, oh, because that's what they did at Florida. Because the gun, husband and wife shit, you'll get a hotel, you'll get a two server hotel.
What?
Yeah.
Are you serious?
Only one person per bed.
In Gufford.
In Gufford.
The husband and wife can't, can't have a bedroom.
That's what I, I read. My wife.
First thing she did when she heard that, it's going to the motel.
So what about the fairgrounds? Where should we tell the barrel racing lady?
In effect, what we're doing is opening our system up, uh, with the conditions, just like we, it probably on the beach.
Yeah.
So realize what we're doing.
But are we?
I don't think we obligated necessarily to, uh, to accept any more reservation, for example, weddings or anything like that.
No new reservations.
About the barrel racing and the crowds and all that kind of stuff.
That's fine.
When is the governor going to come back?
I am, this lady, she was playing the barrel.
She, um.
Is that it's spread out, it's fresh out. It's outdoors, it's spread out.
Oh, so.
You know, you can give animals that. Only cats.
Those horses.
Dogs.
Only cats.
Probably the horses don't.
Okay.
And dogs?
Uh, dogs.
Um, she says, I wanted to let you know that while we are riding and competing, we are not in groups or riding in close contact with others. This event normally is an event that people come and leave after competition. We do realize we would need to put rules in the thing, like maybe no one allowed sitting place and bleachers and we're signing up for competition to allow plenty of distance between people. We're kind of a social distancing sport because our horse is on par. Also, the announcing standard is all, always less than four people. We'd appreciate your help to please consider letting, uh, for show on five nine twenty.
This is May ninth, not late. So where do we need to give her an answer today?
Yeah, because she's the night.
Yeah.
It's this weekend. Who's going to place the fact that they're keeping distancing?
The one Jew in Gufford. He trying to figure out how.
Hey, you guys become volunteering anyway.
The signs are up, the signs are up through the fairgrounds, it says, it says no groups more than ten and six foot distance. So I guess they could have ten in an, in an area together, spread out.
I think we really need to consider opening up the economy as safely as possible.
See, that's.
It's a little different.
Yeah.
I, I think we.
I'm with it, man, I say, I make a motion, we open it all back up, give the ten people and be done with it. I'll make that motion.
What's going to happen is the cure is going to be worse than the disease.
It's like one or the other.
Come on, Marlon, take it, Marlon.
It'll be a shot next year. It's like.
I like. We're going to go getting surveillance cameras, get them now and tell everybody we're surveilling you.
And the wrong.
Robbie, do they have enough cameras out there?
They got cameras here.
We don't have any at the fairgrounds, do we?
We don't.
Why not?
The hunters took them.
They took my whole thing, they took the inside, they took the cans.
And I make a motion if we just have to back up and adhere to the social distancing rules, we won't.
We open.
What are the, the cities are opening things up or?
Well, I mean, it's the community centers, you said, what you're talking about.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. They talking about horse races and wins, I'm, I'm just trying to.
Well, I've tried to see what.
My second motion she made was to open up everything, so I don't know if that's what we're ready to do. Yes.
Community centers and the fairgrounds?
Uh huh.
But I didn't get a second.
But I see, if you go open everything, we need to wait till the eleven, let's just see what the governor says.
I didn't get a second.
That's just what the governor says.
I'll just bring it up here.
The only one that really gets started too is that the one that's going to have five hundred people. Which one is the one that the fairgrounds, so all and advertise the show?
Oh, no.
Well, you can't do it because of.
No, not five hundred.
Okay. But so barrel racing is okay?
I think barrel racing and the two weddings, correct?
Yeah.
But no more than that.
There's two weddings?
No, just one.
Oh, it was one, sorry. Cancelled.
Okay, gotcha.
But this is something to change, this is what the governor said next Monday.
Yeah. So they say it off on the.
So no guy with the barrel race and the win, but nothing else.
No party, no birthday parties, no.
And the Coliseum can seat eleven thousand people and they're using only twelve hundred are coming. So it's a little bit, they've been.
Four, what you got?
You're selling tickets. Troy, Troy, you ready, you got something?
Yeah, ma'am.
Uh, I was just, okay. Discuss outdoor facilities for businesses located on the beach. Okay, so, um, there have been some businesses like Shaggy's and others that want to, they've, they've been allowed to open, uh, their vendors or outdoor dining and they're right on the beach. And they're wondering if they could put their tables there.
Forty-seven hours.
I'm with it.
Me too.
Not me.
Me too. You're not going to? Company restaurants, three more months.
We can't open it all, then, no. Back to my first.
Sure. I just think that.
What was yours? You going to pay with me?
I'm not going, I'm not saying where, where they're going to put, they're going to put tables on the beach.
Yeah, they want to. On our sand, no, just kidding. Don't they have you carrying rides, aren't there some, isn't there some kind of, something they have?
They still going to maintain the pin, uh, the suits with this.
It'll help. Yes, yes. They're doing all, everything the city tells them to do, they just want to kind of stretch out because they don't maybe have as enough dick to do it, I guess. Just do it.
Upside down. Remember what, see, it's every basket.
Yeah.
They got plenty of room and they already encroached on the same beach. Their whole little playground.
That was just one, there's a lot of them that like to do that, they're on the beach.
They've all got their.
But it's right, I mean, they're, they're paying a lot of money just, just to be there on the beach, so you all mind if you're.
They already encroached on, Shaggy's in particular, it's the one that built the playground on the public sand beach. So now they want more?
No, they don't want to do it, they just want to do it till this pandemic is over.
Out of September.
Yeah, it's not permanent.
But they have.
They just want to move out a little bit, but they want to have a band or something.
You're not thinking of either, well, stipulations.
Now, it's temporary.
We don't need a public.
I'll make a motion to temporarily allow outdoor dining facilities for businesses located on the sand beach. Just to spread out.
We're allowing business to use that beach.
That's right, I can.
Well, that is the question. That was the question, do we need to lease it like a vending spot?
I don't think you can do that on this kind of beach leasing. You got to remember the sand beach is subject to injunction.
Remember they're right on the beach now, these aren't business, these are right there, right?
And then there, there's also the law that. The hard thing about it is when you do one, you're going to start to get requests for others, so get ready.
Well, I, I know, I just want to know if they're, if they're located on the beach, right next, you know, looking at the water, shore, and they ease out on the beach with their tables temporarily until the pandemic is over because they can't have that much serving space inside.
One thing I would say to them is asking forgiveness is a lot easier than asking permission.
Well, and if their request was because we, they need the six feet of distance, to me, that's a reasonable request.
I agree.
I truly don't have a problem with them putting the table out on the sand beach and serving romantic dinner, I might go get one. I might go with. Teasing, I'm teasing.
You've been running live so much, you're not going anywhere we need to.
I'm just teasing. But, uh, you got to be careful, I'm impressed if you're sudden, but, you know, I ain't got a problem with it, though. But legally, if you're, they're a business for profit, they're putting tables out there and charging people on public beach, you know, and I'm not.
Which is no different.
You're not charging them for the beach place, they're just charging them to sit down and have a.
Honey, this is what happened when the thunderbirds flew up. They put a tent up, they started charging people to go sit under the tent and watch the thunderbirds. And we shut them down.
We shut them down.
So what you're asking is no different, in my opinion. I mean, they're charging them to sit down in that charity at that table and they'll, they'll charge them.
I, I just, I don't think it's a good idea for this board to be granting permission to a business to operate part of this business on the sand beach, you're setting precedent. We're restoring, we have rejected that and you're, you're just going to have, go create some problems. Now whether or not they put a little folding table down there and serve somebody, they don't.
We don't know that.
If we didn't do permission for it, what's.
Okay, got your message, okay, let's move on. Number six, number sixty, thank you.
I hope we brought guys out there where they all.
Number sixty-two, discuss hiring, uh, a new employee at three percent less than current position.
I actually, uh, think this may qualify for the executive session because I have two particular employees' names, but apparently what's going on is when we're advertising for new positions, uh, some departments, not all open, but some departments are advertising. At, instead of giving a range, like ten to twelve dollars an hour, depending on experience, the person that left there was making twelve bucks an hour, so because it's in their budget, they're just going to put these new positions for twelve dollars an hour. And I just want to look at HR making a couple of those.
Let me ask you something. This court, this court has a policy on hourly rate. For example, a road department employee comes in, he doesn't make, or she doesn't make the same amount of money that the, that, that the same person's, uh, classified in the same position would make until a year. Because in effect, the board has established they don't get that pay raise. You see, the last pay raise is not applicable to a new employee until that employee works a year. So giving somebody the same amount or more as far as a salary, uh, how they schedule a person, I don't see how we're doing that, that's in violation of our policy.
But that's a policy for the raise, is it not, it's not a policy for a starting salary?
These are part-time, but the people they're replacing, well, made twelve dollars an hour, so instead of them advertising, and those people have been here four, five years.
But it's incumbent upon the board to approve that. A department head doesn't make that determination of what salary they made based on the fact that there's money in the budget. The board is, our board shouldn't make a determination as to what a salary would be, if there's a question whether we want to hire a department head or anyone, and we make that decision what we'll offer the salary. The board makes that decision.
There's a salary range and it's, I think.
They don't use it.
Also go by.
But that salary range and ultimately what the salary is, is determined by the board, is what I'm trying to tell you. I think what Beverly's talking about is a department head brings somebody in and says, okay, I'm going to start you at the same salary the last guy made that held that position.
Right, because that is what was suggested for, was this person at twelve dollars an hour.
But that person had.
That person's gone. So if this person comes in and they're not has experience, assuming they're not with experience, they shouldn't walk in the door making a second.
That, the last pay raise, now help me out on this. The last pay raise is not applicable to a new employee until they work a year.
They should be three percent less or at least three percent less. You can hire them even less than the three percent.
Yeah, but at least.
Depending on their qualifications.
And once they fulfill their year employment, then they automatically receive that three percent increase, which catches them up to the other employee at, at the same classification.
But I don't know if we officially have a policy stating that that's how whenever we did.
The board's act, the board's act, the board's action is a policy. That was the board, the board made, made that determination.
At the time of the last, at the time of the last three percent, which was this past year, the previous issue.
And that's what's been occurring since the last time we gave a three percent raise.
So do we need a motion to pay more?
We would just say that whatever that position is would be hired at three percent less.
No more than three percent less, but they could go less if they, if they could hire them at ten percent less, correct?
They could hire them at any, anything less than three percent.
I think what you're doing.
Depending on their qualification.
You need to be careful about if you, if you hire somebody in less than three percent, let's say five percent, you could do that. Then what you're doing here ultimately, as years go by, you're creating that discrepancy in those salaries. Two people are doing the same job, one get, five years down the road, one guy doing this, the same job as this guy, he's making ten percent more. Then you confront it with, is there an equity property doing the same job? Why not increase? So then you're going to have to increase that in the end. So I think the best thing to do is do it like we're doing, rating the year.
And you see, sometimes that's where you get the equalization because sometimes that person came in maybe six months into the year and didn't get their three percent for their year. So they're really like a year and a half.
Yes.
It's, so we try to look at that too, you know, we don't wanna leave anybody too far behind as far as getting from the raises.
But I was told that they said, well, that was what was pledgeded, that amount was what was pledgeded, so therefore that's right. And I just.
I'm just telling you what, our policy has been, and I know a lot of employees have been subjected to that, not getting the three percent until they work a year. So, and no raises should be granted by anyone just because it's in the budget. They have money in the budget. The board should approve that.
Alrighty, uh, Mr. Hallman, do you have anything? You didn't have executive session.
We have a.
Wait.
No, well, yeah, do they have one thing, uh, one of our county employees that, my, uh, the director that, that needs community center, Richard Martin, he's, he's sick. He, uh, has, I think he has some appendicitis, plans to be taken to the emergency room and now he did not see you because it all went so. We just keep him in our prayer. Was he delayed because of that?
I bet he was. Ms. Martin?
I do, I've got.
Supervisor Martin, I apologize.
I've got two issues. One is the grants already used. I noticed it was not on the agenda, but are we ready to make that?
Family grants, um, we have, we have to, we have to go through that process, you know.
Can we get that?
You turn those in, yeah, you know, it's scoring, the scoring. We need to have the scoring. So depending on where we will do it for the next meeting, y'all could do the scoring.
Did you set the date?
We need to get that right away because we are lagging behind. It's first call, first served. It's a big deal.
So y'all have the proposals, I think there were four, whatever it was. And you have the criteria, the percentages you have to go through and score. I'll send y'all the score sheets and then if y'all will, um, send it back in to, we can do that for the next meeting. What y'all will do is have we get the score sheet.
I'm afraid we're gonna miss out.
Right. I'll send them to you this afternoon.
Okay, great.
The, the grading sheet.
Would you mind sending us copies of that?
Okay, yeah, I'll resubmit them.
Resubmit them for.
And then with the score sheets.
And the score sheet.
And then I have another request that I think Mr. Hallman's working on. The Red Cross, it provides a lot of service to our constituents in the county, has requested some help to repair their parking lot. And, uh.
We researched that, you have to forward it to do that.
We do. So can I make a motion that we do that? The estimate is high, it says twenty-three thousand, but I think it's gonna be less than that. I think we're gonna pay for it at district once.
Okay, can we do that? I'm, let's, second, do a second.
Yeah, he just said what you do.
By statute.
But they do a lot, they train them.
They're not on contract. We can't.
No, we're gonna do it.
By statute, they're gonna do it in, in kind, they're gonna do it.
So if you may disqualify or request.
They do need a letter and we could do an order, so we could, we could do an order and approach.
Thank you, I didn't hear that.
They want some blood too.
Some executive session.
We didn't really vote on that Red Cross thing.
I have a motion, a second motion, a second. I have a motion, a second, I'll vote for it, second, I'll vote for it now.
All right.
I'll vote for it. Ms., supervisor.
I'm good? Okay. Okay.
Just one more thing, I just wanna just kind of, uh, congratulate the men and boards on taking leadership going as far as the, uh, the on-site community testing with the COVID nineteen. I think they're doing extremely well and I think they showed up at everybody's location and they just showed great leadership. So I, I think that was a, a good thing with them.
Thank you. You started that, that's right. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I have.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Screaming. And local agreement resolution, I did have this, uh, resolution and I could not find where the county adopted it. So just to cover us a little bit, this is a request from the city of Buloxi for assistance with pavement repairs on Mason Road. And, um, they're gonna pay for half of the estimated cost.
Do you like to read that out?
No, I'm just kidding. So can I make a motion?
Yes, ma'am. We have. So a second and second, all those in favor, seeing if five I say nine. I'll pose motion carry.
We may have done it, but I couldn't.
I have a, I have a question. Are they doing the work and we're paying half?
We're doing the work and they're paying.
And they're paying us.
Apparently are a pass.
I have a, um, it's not actually our responsibility, but it is a, something that I don't know if we can go on or not. We are having people that are having a horrible time getting their unemployment check. And I know that's a state issue and a federal issue, but when you have people crying because their house is gonna be repossessed. And their car is gonna be repossessed, they can't get the people, the unemployment people on the phone. When they do, they say you're approved, your check is, is deposited, but yet they have no debit card or any proof that that is, that's not in their checking account. They can't, they spend hours upon hours on, for the, on the phone, whether they're either on hold or the phone is ringing. When they answer it, they hang up on them. I mean, I don't, I don't know, I, I don't know what we can. I'm hoping that we can maybe contact the state, uh, unemployment office, that we can.
I'm sure that, I think they're all aware.
I mean, I know they're inundated, but when you have individuals that are depending on that check to make their car note and their house note. And they're gonna go into default because they don't have it.
I remember I can't, these folks need to understand that they, and I have other people, all they have to do is call their mortgage company. And that mortgage company will tack those papers onto the end of the mortgage. They'll make, maybe they can pay interest on it or something. They'll, they'll work with them. I've helped several people. And the same thing with, with your car. None of these banks are there trying to take that. They all understand the problem, you just have to ask for it. Some people may not vote to ask for, not to ask, call up and just ask. They can't unvictime. The governor has to stay on eviction, so of course, of course, his order also says you gotta continue to pay your notes.
They gotta pay your line bill.
Well, however, I mean, I mean, you just gotta. Most people are scared to make that phone call. People that call, it's that, to me, I said, look, just take out the phone and call them until you get a voice on the phone. They'll work, they're working with people, they really are. They're trying and I.
Unemployment.
Unemployment's not, they're, they're inundated. They've got normally eighty people and they've got two hundred and fifty, I'm quoting the governor's press conference about it. But the phone calls are just, you know, two hundred and fifty can't handle.
But this one, they're saying that they're actually, that they have their money and they don't have their money. They're not even, I mean.
But don't let them come get their car and stuff. They need to make, and they'll call these people, you tell them to just call your mortgage company. And if they start giving them problems, tell them, call me, I'll help somebody, I don't mind them. And they, uh, the, the, most people are scared to call their mortgage company. Most of them are scared to call their car company. They'll just pick up the phone, they'll just tack it on to the end, that's what most of them have done. And it costs you a little bit more money because you're paying longer, but, but they will, they'll help. From my experience, they've helped, yeah, but I've said that one, yeah.
That, that gives me some direction because I just, I didn't know if we could do a resolution and send it to whoever, whoever.
It's been resolution to death and what I've seen, they've all talked about it, it was on the, the big press conference about that specifically this past week that I watched. It was just, it's just an overwhelming problem.
Resolution was simply imply that they're, they're not doing anything, or are they not, you know, kind of, kind of being frustrating.
Most people are scared to call their, their bill collectors and say, look, I'm out of the job right now, I'm trying to get back to work. It is a big problem.
Like they're trying to get something done, somebody, someone to get something.
Yeah, I just was concerned about them and it's not just, it's, it's not just one person, it's a, it's a lot of people that are facing that same. I mean, there what, there's ten thousand, how many people were let go one day, ten thousand from the industry?
Even when this wasn't going on, you go over to justice court sometime and sit there, ask Melvin Ray, I'll be sitting there many times, I'm trying my best to resist this, when he's crying and. Well, I can't stand it anymore, I give up. The last lady I helped took six months, I was like, which, was her heart, I felt sorry for her, but he just, it's sad out there.
Be careful with charities.
I, I volunteered and regretted it, but, you know, you never know that when you started. Melvin always appreciates it. Some kids, some of those, that one lady I helped, six months, she had three kids.
Okay, uh, well, thank y'all. Sheriff, do you have anything? I'm sorry.
Executive session, yeah.
Executive session.
Executive, so let, let's hear about the executive sessions.
Uh, we got personnel matter of mapping, we got a matter of litigation involved in the sheriff's department, we just got strategies in.
Security.
Security.
Security issue. Mapping. Is that mapping of code?
Purchase and.
And we might as well, Brian Taylor claim, that's what we just denied, I'm telling you, I did something about that, we discussed. And the other claim is, that's the D O part, if you wanna talk about that, we can.
All right, we've heard the reasons to go into executive session.
Motion going to executive session based on lead presentation.
Motion, we have a second, all those in favor, seeing if five I say nine. I'll pose motion carry.
I'm gonna have the executive session.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor, seeing if five I say nine.
Aye.
All votes.
Can we give a report? During, during the course of the second session, the board discussed the matter briefly. All for us going to the second session before no action was taken.
Sheriff, do you?
What do you think action is?
I would not admit.
Hope, I, I can say it now.
Can you, um, do we hire somebody?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm making a motion to hire Damian Holcomb, represent, uh, Morgan, uh, Ja- uh, Jacob Morgan. Uh, case file one, is that what's it?
Cohen.
Cohen, one nine C V nine seven six eight S O dash J C G.
I'll say that. I have a, a motion, second. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, seeing if five I say nine. I'll pose motion carry. Anything else?